All righty, y'all set?
Yep.
I hereby call the City Council meeting to order. Everybody would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Lynda Rolco.
Okay. Councilmember Connolly.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Reif.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Andrusik.
Aye.
And Mayor Ciara.
Aye.
Thank you very much. No reordering of the agenda tonight?
No ma'am.
All righty, we're moving on to public comments. This is where our public has an opportunity to speak on any item on the agenda, off the agenda, three minutes. I'm calling up Finn Frunkie first, please.
This is actually item five.
Oh, I'm sorry, item five, okay. How about Sue Schwartz? Please step up.
Good evening, members, and councilmembers. I'm Sue Schwartz, I'm the Blissby Director for the Buellton Senior Center.
I would like to invite everybody to our second annual Blast from the Past to be held on May 21st from 1:00 to 5:00 at the Mendenhall Museum. There's food, drink, dancing, silent auction, the whole bit. I have some flyers to share.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, Kevin McConnell, step right up.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, my name's Kevin McConnell, 1551 West Highway 246. Also, my wife is here with me. We are the property owners across the street at 85 West Highway 246. We've had our computer business there for the last 15 years or so, and we've rented out the front half of our building now to the Postal Annex business, and there's a tremendous increase of traffic coming into the building and right next to it because of that. People come in and park for a few minutes, five minutes, 10 minutes tops, it seems like, and I would like to respectfully ask that you consider putting on an agenda, a 15-minute parking zone right next to the building on Park Street.
All righty. Quick question.
And you can...
Is there any restrictions on the parking on Park Street right now?
There are not. It's regular public parking like everywhere else, so during council items, if the council wants to bring this back for discussion, then with the consensus, we would bring it back at another meeting.
Okay. And you're saying that there is a problem with people parking right next to your business?
Yeah, sometimes people park for a long time. There's no residences right there, so I don't see a reason that they would really need to park their cars for three or four days or a trailer, so I think, I don't think it would hurt anyone's parking for the residents, especially at night, you know, the parking would be allowed overnight, but during the day, I think it would be really helpful and keep things moving smoothly, so...
Got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty. Next, we have Therese Kokorowski.
Yes.
Please step up.
Good evening, thank you very much. I live in the Rancho de Maria section of Buellton. During the last two years, there has been a significant increase in the number of amplified music events at Flying Flags Resort. Toward the end of last summer, there were loud amplified music events on Fridays, Saturdays, and holidays almost every weekend. My concern is that these events will continue or even increase this spring and summer and disrupt the peace and quiet our neighborhood generally enjoys. Already this year, there have been two events that I'm aware of, and perhaps even more that I missed because of my travels. Many of my neighbors and I can hear the music in our homes in Rancho de Maria, even with the windows closed. The sound that resonates the most is the amplified bass instruments and drums. These sounds are even louder during summer months when we have our windows and doors open in the evening. I have spoken to several of my neighbors who are also concerned about the noise level coming from Flying Flags. I have a petition with their signatures to submit to you. My neighbors and I would like to request the Buellton City Council to limit the number of amplified music events at Flying Flags to conform to the same regulations imposed on other local venues, specifically Figaro Mountain and Riverview Park. We also request that advance notice be given to Rancho de Maria residents at least one week before each event. When we moved to this community in 2007, we were attracted to the quiet, slower-paced lifestyle here in Buellton. This is what makes our community special, and we wish to preserve that character for all of our residents. We believe the City Council should place a higher priority on the needs of our own citizens before providing more entertainment options for visitors. There are many other venues for music and entertainment in the local area that the visitors at Flying Flags can avail themselves of, and Flying Flags Resort will continue to be a thriving business with or without amplified outdoor entertainment. We do not believe our request places any financial burden on the resort, therefore see no reason why it should be denied. And I have a copy of signatures from the neighborhood, and they're mostly along Avenue of the Flags. That's where we hear most of the music. I also, and I will submit that to you, I also have pictures. I have, the first one is for, of last fall, and it shows the amplifier, which was about like this. On April 25th, I believe, there was music coming from there. I walked over there in the evening. The amplifiers were taller than I am, and two sets of them.
Speakers.
Speakers. Thank you. And I have those marked here.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask you a question? So, yeah, sorry, you came before us on the planning commission and...
I did.
And I remember Dan was there.
Yes.
And Dan made a bunch of compromises and agreements and whatnot, and so it sounds to me like, like maybe what he agreed on is wasn't, I'm not sure what the follow-through was, but it sounds like it didn't necessarily meet the compromise?
No. What Dan was saying is that it was not amplified music.
Correct.
That it was acoustic, and that was not true. A couple weeks later, I went over there, it was amplified. I tried calling him, I couldn't reach him. I emailed him, and he finally got back to me. I did work with Mark on that. My concern is...
I think we're, we get it. I think we get it, yeah.
What I will do is contact Flying Flags and...
Well, so I think, so I, okay, so what, do we need to bring this up as a topic?
You would need to bring it up under a council item to bring it back.
Okay, sure. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I've got the last speaker's slip. If anybody else in the audience wants to speak, now's your chance. I've got it, I've got one more left. Hang on, I'm just giving everybody an opportunity. I would not leave you out, Larry. If anybody wants to speak, now's the time to fill out your slip. Our last speaker is Larry Rankin. Would I do that to you?
Yes. I love you too. You know, first thing I'd like to say, I just got home, didn't have time to eat, but I found this paper on my doorstep, and, and what's interesting is, the first thing I'd like to say is I respect every one of you up there. I know that you're doing the best you can and what you really believe in, and one of the things I would really hope is that eagles wouldn't get in the way, and you would really do what is best for the community. And what I did when I got, the only reason I came here is for this reason, and I want to state what I did first. And in the paper, it states that Mayor Holly Sierra expressed reluctance to revisit the RV ordinance indicated claims that the ordinance was, I've got my glasses.
Your head right on your head.
Yeah, I know, but I'm...
Wrong one.
My optic, which means I see up close better, but that doesn't always work. Was, was, okay, ordinance was instigated by and only benefited a few residents, were not true, and the council made the right decision. And what I, what I see of that is that I don't really think that the council made the right decision. Of course, that's what our wonderful, you know, our wonderful American heritage has. And the reason for that is I went back and I went ahead and reviewed all of the videos that were on there, and I never really saw where we were told or had any idea that there was going to be an ordinance like that. It was all people that were against having RVs, boats, and trailers. And one of the things that really concerns me, Holly, is that this is only a rumor that's going around, but I think a rumor can be bad, and I really would not want to believe it, but the rumor is that you're a really good friend with that person, and that's the reason you're pushing it. And then when I read something like this, that you didn't want to review it because you think you already made the right decision, when you really didn't listen to all the, all the people, and there's so many other people out there that are against this, that it seems to me that there's not really the open mind, or should be. And that's what I think is troublesome to me, that you have already made up your mind with me reading this, that you don't feel as though that it should have ever gone any further, and your decision was it and final. But fortunately, we had three people that decided to go ahead and review this, which I really respect highly. And I respect you, don't get me wrong. And my time is up, and I thank you all, and you all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Larry.
Go ahead, Larry.
Okay. I don't see any other speaker slips, so I am closing public comment, moving on to the consent calendar. We have four items. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Four items to address, first, minutes of April 27, 2017, regular city council meeting, list of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year 2016-17, contract amendment and extension with Cosmont Companies for Economic Development Services, and acceptance of bid and award of contract for the 2016-17 road maintenance project.
Okay. Yeah, you're, um, Mayor, I'd like to pull four off for discussion on this consent calendar.
All righty.
I'll move for approval of one through three.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Lynda, why don't we take care of those?
Okay. Vice Mayor Andrusik.
Aye.
Councilmember Connolly.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Reif.
Aye.
And Mayor Ciara.
Aye. All righty. Councilmember King.
The question I had about that was, there was a 5% on this, and I, and I could have asked you earlier, I forgot, but there was a, there's a 5%, $42,000 bump on this that is not actually part of the bid. Now, is that SOP, or was that just an case?
And I'll defer that to City Engineer Rose Hess.
Here, that is, and we're asking for extra monies, so should there be additional roadwear or road work or repairs that would be needed, or additional sidewalk work that would come up in the timeframe, that we would have monies available to be able to include that into the bid? But that is not an automatic addition to the contract, that the contractor would just assume. That's a contingency amount.
It's a contingency. If the city determines there's this extra sidewalk that needs to be done, we have the money to do it. It's not the contractor telling us, we want to do this, this, and this. So it's, it's basically all city governed.
Right, I got that. I just, I just didn't have a chance to ask you, but, but everything they have bid for is, has been gone over by them, looked at, this is what we'll charge you for X, and that's just if you go, oh, hey, they're out here already, there's another area that needs to be repaired.
Yeah, let's say a sidewalk we discover has some damage, so we can add that to the contract without having to go back through any process.
I have a comment, a request about that.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I mean, shouldn't that come back to the council to approve that instead of...
Now, that's the purpose of the 5%, that we have that ability if there's, we see some roadwork and would not be able to exceed that.
I actually, I actually have a few questions, so I'm glad you pulled this, if you don't mind. Certainly, Councilmember Reif. I have another. I'm, well, kind of piggybacking, I'm less concerned about the 5%, I'm more concerned about, I shouldn't say concerned, I'm more interested to hear as to why these projects were allotted for the million dollar, essentially a million dollar allotment for expenditure. I assume that there was some sort of triage done or something like that, that these are the worst-case scenarios that need fixing ASAP in some manner?
Well, this is part of our road maintenance project, so we have a pavement maintenance plan that sections off different parts of the city, and we go through a rotation every year as far as which city, which city, which portion has its next road repair or road maintenance project. So slurry seal or grinding and paving, depending on what that section needs at that point. Notice throughout town, you know, we've worked on different areas every year. So last year, the section that we were working on includes like McMurray Road, some of the major roads that already has other construction going on, so we, we held off on the prior year's project, and so we're including a larger sum for this year's project to include more areas of road repair and concrete repair.
So I get that. So what, does this fall under the non-departamental fund?
No, this is under capital improvement projects, so that is encompassed over the gas tax, general fund, and Measure A.
Okay, so, all right, maybe we wait to talk about capital improvement projects when we get to the, to the budget. I'm not trying to belabor it here, I get what we're trying to do.
Let me maybe explain, this is what we've been doing for many years, so our streets are, do not fall in disrepair. It's not identifying bad streets, it's, every city needs to go through their streets and redo that.
Mark, I, I get it, but when the capital improvement project is somewhere in the neighborhood of $3 million, and we're pulling $2 million of reserves, I think the city council should have some prioritization or triage with advice from the Public Works Director as to why we're spending essentially a million dollars of budget, i.e. reserves, and I know some of that money's coming from non-reserve money, but still huge chunks of it are, right? And so I think that's part of the, you give me a weird face. No?
The reserves are mostly out of the gas tax, but it's not even really reserves for there. We're talking about enterprise funds when you're talking about the other capital improvement projects.
So when you talk about, all right, so let's, we, we can ta, we can table it, I, I had an hour-long conversation with Carolyn on this topic, and I'm not sure it's as clear-cut as, I don't understand as clear-cut as you do as regards to where the money is actually being, the genesis of the money.
Well, gas tax, which is not reserves, that's...
So gas tax is split amongst five different projects for $500,000.
And Measure A.
And so Measure A is split among six different projects for $600,000. So no matter how you spin this bottle, there's still significant chunks of money coming out of reserves, absent the other revenue streams. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with what the plan is, I mean, I'm not saying it doesn't need to get done, I'm just saying, when we start talking about reserve dollars from city, from city budgets...
But, but it's general fund, which is not reserves, correct?
That should be correct.
So there's, there's general fund, not reserves, gas tax, which is not reserves. No, no, so, so hold on, I had an hour-long conversation with Carolyn about this, not necessarily true.
Well, if, if it's capital improvement projects, we generally budget it from reserves, and if we do have operating income, then we'll use that to offset it.
Right.
But we don't know, so when we're doing our budget, we, we just say from reserves.
Piece, I get it, so that's what I'm saying. My only, my only part of that is that there's, I'm not saying this isn't a priority, I'm just, I don't know what the other priorities are, right? And so if it's a million dollars, that's a lot of money out of the budget. We don't have $100 million, right? We have like six or seven from our, from our expenditures, so...
And this is out of this fiscal, you're not the budget we're looking at coming up? Okay, I just want to make sure you...
Sure. No matter what, we're still talking about a $6 million budget and a million dollar expenditure. I mean, whether it's $7 million next year, it's still, you know, one set, you know, that's still a huge chunk of budget. So that's what's got me a little wrapped, is I, I just don't, maybe an overview or an overall, or what the pri, I know I'm big on this priority issue, I just don't, I'm having trouble swallowing this. It's like, I know it, we need to do our roads, I get it, but, you know, is, is that more important than the sewer, or is that more important than the wastewater, or is that more important than some crisis? I, I don't know. I don't know what all our pro, I don't know what our problems are. I'm not sure what's been missed over the years, we talked about this, so I don't know what to do about, about this upfront. If, if this is one of the highest priority things to do, I mean, if you spend a million dollars, it's already been budgeted, sure, let's, let's press. Is that, is that the case?
Our road projects, that's the one area, one main area of the Public Works that is on a proactive program, so we want to start pushing and delaying areas, that only creates an additional burden later on. So we're trying to extend the life of our streets, ensure that, you know, the potholes and other things like that are taken care of and repaired. So every year, we reassess the next area to see what the appropriate means of road maintenance should be to extend the life of that street. So, that's what this project is.
I got that, I got that. I'm trying to weigh that and consider into the millions of other dollars that we need to spend to fix the numerous other infrastructure projects.
But the water and sewer funds can't be used for this, and these funds can't be used for, so it's...
Correct. But in the end, we're doing transfers in and out of reserves, and so at that fun, at that function, you can do a little bit, I, I get it. I'm not saying, I'm not saying we don't approve it, I know they're line itemed by reserves, I saw that in the budget, I get how the accounting works. I just, I don't know what the priorities are, right?
We have our funds too, we, we can't go between funds, so that, so for example, the enterprise funds cannot pay for roads. Absolutely can't, with, not allowed. And the, but the general fund, however, is required. We have to contribute, it's part of our maintenance of effort, because we get all this grant money from the Measure A and the gas tax, so we are required to, to pay for roads, part of, portion of it.
And my understanding is this is higher than it normally is because we're adding the road going up that was washed out in the rains. We had a wonderful dirt road that they took up to the, one of the reservoirs that was totally washed out, and now they're actually building a road.
Yes, that is included.
So that's a big part of the expense this one time.
Correct.
Do we have insurance for that?
Dirt roads washing now?
Madam Mayor, I got one question. What's your, um, along that line, what is the urgency with that repair on Avenue of Flags?
The repair, oh, the pedestrian?
Correct. I mean, I...
Well, it's, it's...
Is it not a pressing issue like right now?
That, that is a tripping hazard, so we do want, it's, it's in that, this, much of a disrepair that we want to take care of.
Yeah, that is, I'll testify, that's a mess. Yeah, I'm not arguing about the, I'm not arguing about anything you're saying, I just, yeah. Good question, Mr. King.
And I think, just to clarify from city attorney's perspective, I think what Director has to say is that it's not that it's a tripping hazard right now, it's that we want to prevent that from happening in the future.
For any residents hurt?
Right.
For visitors?
I assume that that's correct, right, Rose?
Well, yes, all the areas that we've identified here.
We've, we've appropriately flagged the problems, so...
Okay. Any other questions? Any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it, the item.
Second?
I'll second.
All righty, Lynda.
All right, Councilmember Reif.
Aye.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Connolly.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Andrusik.
Aye.
And Mayor Ciara.
Aye, thank you. Any presentations tonight?
No ma'am.
Any public hearings tonight?
No ma'am.
Councilmember comments? Councilmember Reif, anything?
Yeah, I've, I have two items. First, I'd like to discuss, I, I didn't, I always, she has a very interesting last name, the, the woman about the amplified music, so I'm not...
Kokorowski?
Yeah, I always, I always mispronounce it.
Kokorowski.
What, do you see?
Coco.
Kokorowski, okay. So, when we had this meeting bef, we, she came before us before, and the pro, there was a flat promise made that there would be no amplified music. I chaired the meeting, so that, that, she has actually...
Legitimate...
Photograph, photographical proof of the opposite. So I think we're past the point of calling up the, the Flying Flags Resort, I, at that point, when they, when they promised and they, things happen, whatever, I get it, but I think we need to, maybe take it to the planning commission and have them add it as a, as a condition of their use, to have no amplified music, because they're not, they're not adhering to what they promised. I don't, that's my suggestion, I don't know.
Well, I, I think that would be us, Foster.
Well, it came before, I don't know, Mark?
I would have to take, take a look, but the planning commission is the one who approved all the permits out for that, so it would be before the planning commission.
Well, we could just make an ordinance. No?
No, they, it's, it's the planning commission conditions, and it would go to the, the planning commission, that's why we, the planning commission is there.
And then if there's a problem, it comes here.
Yeah, if I think, just to relieve your concern, most of the guys on the commission were there when the guy, when Dan made the promise, so, I don't blame Dan, I'm sure some guy probably snuck a few amplifiers in or whatever for some event or whatnot, but, but anyway.
Well, my concern would be is, could you do that as a, through the planning commission? I mean, it would have to, in order for, what's driving that, I guess, is, in order for you to enforce it, it would have to be some kind of ordinance.
What's a commission?
Otherwise, otherwise, those guys sitting in the back couldn't go in there and say, you gotta shut it off.
So what you would have to do is a, since it was a land use approval...
Right.
You would have to bring that back at a notice public hearing for a modification of that, to give them an opportunity to, to be heard on that, and then the planning commission would have discretion to add a condition to the existing land use approval that would then be enforceable.
So that's, that's how, it's not, it's, it's an ordinance because we have land use regulations, so the planning commission would add a condition of approval, and that would take care of that.
It's tied, it's tied directly to their permit, gotcha.
But it's a, it's a due process hearing where you'd have to properly notice it and then provide the backup for the decision.
So it's basically modifying their development plan with the condition. If that's, if the council's on board, I will initiate that with the, with the commission and let Flying Flags know.
If that's, if that's what Flying Flags told the planning commission that they would do, then, yeah.
I don't think we can take any action tonight, but I think that, Mr. Berzinski, there was consensus that he would discuss the matter with them, and then a solution could be worked out, just like you would have with any situation.
the woman about the amplified music.
Kokowalski?
Yeah, I always mispronounce it.
Kokorowski.
What, D C?
Coco.
Kokowalski, okay. So when we had this meeting, she came before us before, and the -- there was a flat promise made that there would be no amplified music. I chaired the meeting, so that, she has actually --
Legitimate.
-- photographical proof of the opposite. So I think we're past the point of calling up the Flying Flags Resort. At that point, when they promised and they, things happen, whatever, I get it, but I think we need to maybe take it to the planning commission and have them add it as a condition of their use, to have no amplified music, because they're not adhering to what they promised. I don't, that's my suggestion, I don't know.
Well, I think that would be us, Foster.
Well, it came before, I don't know, Mark?
I'd have to take a look, but the planning commission is the one who approved all the permits out for that, so it would be before the planning commission.
Well, we could just make an ordinance. No?
No, they, it's the planning commission conditions, and it would go to the planning commission, that's why we, the planning commission is there.
And then if there's a problem, it comes here.
Yeah, if I think, just to relieve your concern, most of the guys on the commission were there when the guy, when Dan made the promise, so I don't blame Dan, I'm sure some guy probably snuck a few amplifiers in or whatever for some event or whatnot, but anyway.
Well, my concern would be is, could you do that as a, through the planning commission? I mean, it would have to, in order for you, what's driving that, I guess, is in order for you to enforce it, it would have to be some kind of ordinance.
What's the condition?
Otherwise, those guys sitting in the back couldn't go in there and say, you gotta shut it off.
So what you would have to do is a, since it was a land use approval.
Right.
You would have to bring that back at a notice public hearing for modification of that, to give them an opportunity to be heard on that, and then the planning commission would have discretion to add a condition to the existing land use approval that would then be enforceable.
So that's, that's how, it's not, it's an ordinance because we have land use regulations, so the planning commission would add a condition of approval, and that would take care of that.
It's tied directly to their permit.
Gotcha. But it's a due process hearing where you'd have to properly notice it and then provide the backup for the decision.
So it's basically modifying their development plan with the condition. If that's, if the council's on board, I will initiate that with the commission and let flying flags know.
If that's what flying flags told the planning commission that they would do, then, yeah.
I don't think we can take any action tonight, but I think that Mr. Burzinski, there was consensus that he would discuss the matter with them, and then a solution could be worked out, just like you would have with any situation where there's potentially either nuisance condition being created or a violation of an existing land use approval.
Terrific. And your second item?
So, yeah, I know we have a long meeting, so I'll try to keep the speech short. So I have tried to keep quiet for the last few months and tried to figure how everything gets worked out, sorted out, talked about, et cetera. So I've been digging in depth, and I've met with Rose and Carolyn, and we've had multiple, multiple conversations. And I'm, I would like to hopefully get convinced from some of y'all, if not all of y'all, after meeting with everybody, the way the prioritization for strategic planning works in the city, I think, could be enhanced. And some of that is when we talk about, say, budget priorities, when we talk about capital improvement projects, capital improvement projects which, oh, by the way, amount to about 20% of the entire budget, it's not horribly clear what the priorities are for the city, where the city spends its money in priority fashion, what the integration is with the public in setting those priorities. When I talked to Mark about it, Mark told me that the priorities were set in a closed session in a document that was kind of presented during his performance report, and then he gleaned that and then spreads it to the public via the city, the state of the city. And that's essentially its promulgation effect. And, I don't know, I've been working city government here for a long time, and that was all news to me. So what I would like to propose, and I'm not sure, I'm not saying I have the solution at all, but I would very much like to see us discuss how we walk down a different path to set priorities. I'm not sure if that's a public workshop, I don't mean like one in the gym, I just mean like one here or whatever, and take inputs from everybody, or if the city staff comes up with what they assume to be the priorities, and we just, I'm not sure what the various permutations are therein, but I would like to see a much more greater conversation about strategic guidance and tying in when there are critical infrastructure problems that we have that haven't been fixed in 20 years, and why we're spending a million dollars on this road today versus a sewer project tomorrow versus Avenue of the Flags versus the bike trails versus the lighting on Industrial A versus whatever, and we discuss it in a, you know, a triage slash prioritized fashion that everyone gets to talk about. And I would like to do that, so that's off-soat box.
Okay.
I have three.
What are your comments, Vice Mayor?
Comments? Wanted to appreciate whoever did it, perhaps Public Works, the increased protection of the fire hydrant in front of Shell Station on 246. Over the years, I've witnessed three times the fire plug being opened with a vehicle. And it, they have two new steel posts, the other post would get straightened up and hit again and hit again, so I wanted to compliment our Public Works or thank Caltrans. There are two steel posts now, which Truck will probably still pick them up.
Two terms, yeah.
But I don't know, I mean, maybe we should consider moving the fire block if that, if we lose it again, but that, I missed commenting on that at the last meeting, and I wanted to thank whoever came up with that. The second was the pavement maintenance and new sidewalks email that I got, I'm not sure if it was in my box or the Caltrans, telling people what's going on. And I think this is a great document, from where to where, we're going to go, what we're going to do in the timeline. And I was going to ask that we have this enlarged and posted in our kiosk for the walking public on the corner of Avenue of Flags and 246, because there's cobwebs there now. So, that was two.
Yep, we will do that.
Three was the recognition, and I don't, the newspaper recognized our cover, they covered the presentation of the Williams Scholarship Fund, and I wish to make a couple of corrections and apologies for anybody that read it, so it's not misunderstood, and I thank the paper. The article has our mayor's picture and two different recipients, we have Ashley Diaz, and we have Madison Hunter Olsen, who is identified as Ashley Hunter Olsen in the paper. And so that's not as critical as the comment that it was a $1,000 scholarship. So I got out my folder for the scholarship fund and would like to re-remind everybody, they started in 2000, the year 2000. This is the 18th year, I think it was announced it was the 10th or 11th year, and it's a $2,000 scholarship with two $1,000 payments, so the students wouldn't go the first year and the Williams not get, achieve what they were trying to do. So they want to award the money to the institution two years in a row, and that this year, and I'm pleased to represent the mayor next Wednesday night at the presentation at the high school, to Ashley and Madison. And that brings to a total $72,000 that the Williams brothers have, the Williams Foundation has put to use through Beelton students, and I didn't want that to go unnoticed, and I really thank a skidding presentation, but a lot of people work on it, and we had some great candidates this year. Always, I think we've always had great candidates. So that was, those were my three items.
Anything else?
Is it, we're going to do committee reports, or is that?
We haven't gotten there yet, we're still on comments.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The others about the channel cities.
Okay. Any comments? John? No? All righty. Mine is only that we had an ice cream social a couple weeks ago to benefit the Friends of the Beelton Library. We had some great music, tamales, ice creams donated by the Singer Center, and anything anybody can do to help support our Beelton Library is greatly appreciated. All righty.
So is there any consensus on my idea?
Well, that's more of an item, so when we get to council items, then we bring it back for whether we're going to bring it back.
Okay.
Peace.
Where's council items?
Okay, so when we get to council items, Foster, Councilmember Reif had one, does, is there a consensus to bring that back and work on different ways to look at prioritization and the budget? I don't think that's a bad idea.
There's one, anybody else?
I don't either. I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Any other council items?
No, thank you, sorry, I will move it to council items next time.
We're good.
Okay.
We're good.
Still running, still running.
Lots of time. Council wants to comment some more for ice creams.
Yes, I got that. That made you look bad.
No, it didn't. No, it didn't. Any other council items? Mine is to bring back that 15-minute parking zone the McConnells requested at Park, Park Street? Is that?
Yes.
Willing to discuss it?
Consent.
Willing to discuss it?
Any consensus?
Okay.
If you have mine.
All righty. Any other council items? Moving on, yeah? No?
On the parking, we would only be doing Park, he didn't ask for 246, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
I believe that's a Caltrans. Written communications?
No, ma'am.
Committee reports? Vice Mayor Andrusik?
We didn't have any committees, but would this be the Channel Cities?
You might, yeah, that works.
Last Friday night, three of us, four of us, attended the Channel Cities Dinner hosted in Moro Bay. City manager and his wife Sandra, Mr. Conley, his wife Jennifer, Holly, and Frank, I forgot Frank the last time.
Yes, okay.
And Beverly and I attended. It was a good event, and really, I'm happy, you know, we're slipping, there are 27 cities, and we're down to 19, 17 or 19, I've lost my little sheet, but we're holding our own, and I think we need to, some surrounding cities I want to represent, but there's always something else going on in other towns.
It was a nice, it was very nice.
Quarterly awards?
You want to discuss quarterly awards?
I attended Quarterly Awards, May the 4th, at Fennec.
Very nice. I appreciate, appreciate you representing us.
I noticed you went there.
I didn't get the invite personally. I got the change of command next month, but not the quarterly. I know. I don't rate.
I think the chamber.
Rudy, Rudy always.
Rudy Henderson is always there.
And I had a library advisory committee yesterday. The board decided to ask the county to leave things as they are, as they were last year, they want to continue that into next year. Whether or not that works or not, City Manager Burzinski and I are going down to the Santa Barbara City Council meeting, May 22nd at 2:00, to ask them not to put 140% increase on their administrative fees for our library. Whether that works or not, we'll see, but I appreciate the support. And then I had a C3H meeting this morning, and they are, they're looking at a plan that's working in LA that they'd like to bring up here, where they bring more businesses in to help with the homeless problem. Those are mine. Anybody else? Okay, moving on to our business items. Business item number five, discussion regarding potential parking time limits on portions of Avenue of Flags. Director Hess?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Member City Council. So we have provided Attachment 1, which gives you an aerial exhibit of Avenue of Flags that starts from the south end and moves its way north. I've identified the different businesses there, such as restaurants, Taco Roco, Parkway, Ellen's Pancake, and then moving on further north, including identifying the number of on-street parking spaces immediately adjacent to those businesses. Council is requested to discuss the parking restrictions or considerations in front of these different businesses, to see if it's necessary to limit parking for a particular period of time, for particular days of the week, or portions of the day. Staff did notify all the businesses and the property owners along this area of Avenue of Flags, so they can provide input as well as far as the impact of parking situations currently to their businesses. Staff did receive a couple of emails from Mother Hubbard's, which has been emailed and printed in hard copy for you guys as well, and also entered into the record. And they've identified particular times of the day in which their business has heavy amounts of patrons, and also indicating that a two-hour time limit would be potentially too short for them. So with that, staff recommends that the council discuss the potential and the need for the parking time limits, and what appropriate areas, if there is time limits to occur, and provide staff with further direction. And at that time, if, should council want to limit parking at particular times, then we would bring back the appropriate resolution.
Thank you very much. Before we get into a discussion, does anybody on council have any questions for Director Hess, before I go to public comment?
I have one, go ahead.
Questions?
Yeah, so, just so I understand, because I'm feeling probably multiple of my fellows up here have an equal question. So we have no way to enforce it, right?
At this time?
No matter what we?
Well, at this time, there is no restriction, so.
I'm sorry, in the scenario where we do imply a restriction, are we going to have an enforcement capability?
And that would fall under the Sheriff's Department.
In my understanding, and Lieutenant Grady can correct me if I'm wrong, they would not be doing parking enforcement. If somebody called and complained and said, that car's been there for three hours, then they could dispatch a deputy and they would tag it, but it's, they're not going to be going there at the morning and tagging the cars and coming back and checking it, we don't have the resources to do that.
So it's, okay, so it's a deterrent, really, at best. Okay, fair enough.
I might still have some market tickets on my car.
Any other questions for Director Hess?
I think along that line, I wondered if the business, do we have the flexibility to put, because I'm opposed to anything over 75 minutes, simply because that's what the city of Santa Barbara uses, it's an hour and 15 minutes. But that the owner, and I think I'm understanding, it's only activated when the business owner summons someone to say, this has been that long. And so, you know, I mean, Mr. McDermott's letter talks about some instances where there's a meeting. Again, there were only six, the numbers we were working with, if I recall, were six spots, and so to make three hours for six spots is probably, is not very productive. For John's, the opinion I got from John was he would like to keep the spots turning over rather than, every three hours would be two times during his operating hours. Just wondered if we had the flexibility, if he decides, if it were posted 75 and he doesn't complain until it's three hours.
Somebody would have to make a complaint.
That's what I'm saying, I'm asking, can, is that, does that protect us, Steve, from the customer saying, you're picking on me because you didn't get me the first 75 minutes, but then you got me the second 75 minutes?
Well, I think the sheriff would not go back to the previous 75 if they said he was there for three hours. They're going to come tag the car and then measure 75 minutes from that point.
And that's what I, I think maybe that's a better way to handle this thing.
I'm getting the nod from Lieutenant Grady, so.
Three hours is a long time.
Okay. All righty, more questions, or?
I do.
A question.
Yes. Who initiated this?
The owner.
Excuse me. The initial request came from the owner of Ellen's Pancake House.
And his reasoning behind that?
He had, previously, he had parking on his lot, and he had approval to park on the adjacent vacant property by that property owner. Since the property has now changed hands, that new property owner does not want him to park on that property. So his patrons would be limited to what space he has available on-site and what is available on the street.
When he originally built the building, he had like four or five spots, period.
Right.
And here we are.
Right.
Okay. No other questions?
I have one more. What was his rationale, did he say that, who was parking there taking up?
Commuters.
His parking spaces?
He believes they were, they're commuters, but I don't have verification of who's actually parking there.
Or that they would be there all day.
Right.
6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Okay. I am going to open a public hearing. I have one speaker slip for Finn Runge? Runge?
But I don't expect you to say that.
I'm so sorry.
Not mayor and council. The parking involved, I think it's necessary to be restricted because of the commuters or anybody else parking there for whatever reason there is. Myself, my family, extended family, we use all four restaurants in the corner, both for breakfast, lunch, and dinner at various times. And my wife has a handicap sticker because of her back, so sometimes if the spots are full, well, we go somewhere else, and there, there goes part of the money for your microphone system that you do not use. Therefore, a restriction of parking. I would say maybe 75 minutes, maybe two hours, but no more. That's, you don't take that long time to eat dinner at Taco Roco. Three-quarters an hour if you really stretch it and talk a lot.
Well, tacos. It's a lot of tacos.
Yeah. You can't, you can't carry yourself out of there if you get any more. That's all.
Thank you very much. I have no other speaker slips, so I'm closing public hearing on that one and bringing it back to council for discussion. We've had it here once before. We sent out on the Beelton Buzz a note asking commuters to please not park there. The comment is that the commuting parking lot down the street is full, and that there aren't any other places to park, it's going to be a while before the north end parking lot is even done. And the letter in the Beelton Buzz seemed to have no effect whatsoever. So it's back, and hopefully we can make a final decision. Yes? Councilmember King?
Well, and it has Well, and it has been discussed here before.
Yes.
And I think that you're opening up a can of worms. Because if someone complains to the city and says, "Oh, I don't want anybody parking here," and we put up parking signs, well, then those people go somewhere else. And then those people say, "Well, I don't want to be parking here," so we put signs up there. And then, it's a snowball. So, when people start doing this, you have this snowball effect. Well, I don't think the Sheriff's Department has the resources to go around tagging cars and giving them parking tickets in the first place. You know, I'm sure they're probably stretched pretty thin for starters. The other one is, is I looked on Google Maps, and if you guys have never used Google Maps, you can actually go down to street level, and you can drive down anywhere from here to France and back. So, I look at 2008, 2000, I think it was 2008, 2010, up to 2015. So, the little Google car goes driving around, and it's a 360, and you can look anywhere you want. So, the busy times, that supposedly the commuters, and I've heard it, you know, the buzz was, is that the people are not using the quarter of a mile away parking ride. They're just parking out in front of Mother Hubbard's for some bizarre reason. Well, in every one of those pictures that I looked at, when it's packed out in front of Ellen's, I went down the street, my little Google Drive, and there was 13 to 15 open parking spaces down at the parking lot. So, it's not, it, to me, if you look at it from an overhead, the long line of cars that are parked down the side of Avenue of Flags, to me, and I don't know, because I'm not going to stand around and spy on them all day, those cars are coming out of Avenue of Flags. Because the overflow parking, or the cars outside, you don't have, if you're in Avenue of Flags, and I've never camped there, because I live in this town, I don't need to camp there, but if they're going to charge you to park overnight, which most campgrounds that I've ever been to, if you park an extra car there, they charge you to park that car. So, where are those people coming from? They're coming out of Avenue of Flags, and they're parking on, or out of flying flags, and they're parking on the street. And so, they're taking up those parking spaces that are on the street side, and now, other people can't park down there, so they park out in front of Ellen's for whatever reason. And I mean, unless you find out the source of where those cars are coming from, then, I mean, obviously, the other 15 parking spaces, or whatever, where he could, you, John could use those before, they're no longer there. So, are they people that are in his restaurant? That are just now parking on the street? Or are they people coming out of Avenue of Flags? Who knows? And, and so, my opinion is, is exactly that, is when you start putting parking signs up, now you've got to put parking signs all over the place, and it's, "Welcome to Bulton, no parking." So, if you want to, to me, in my mind, instead of making some kind of restriction, just put a sign up there that says, "No commuter parking." I mean, if you think that's where that's coming from, and they're parked there all day, on public property, and they're taking up those parking spaces for a business, you know, you know, are we going to restrict these people now? Because, honestly, in my opinion, now, and you, I think you're the one that made the comment, now they're going to park across the street, then they're going to park up here, then they're going to go park up at P. Soup Anderson's parking lot. And then P. Soup's going to say, "Hey, there's cars parking in our parking lot all day."
Yeah.
I mean, we're open, in my opinion, open up a can of worms. I mean, if you want to say, "Okay, no commuter parking," I mean, realistically, what Foster brought up, the point that we don't have a mechanism to enforce it anyways. I mean, these guys don't have a pole to stick out the window of their patrol cars as they drive by and poke the tires. I mean, I don't expect that's what we're paying them to do. You know, I mean, if you want to try to eliminate the problem in the simplest way, in my opinion, just say, "No commuter parking," and they'll know what you're talking about.
And how do you enforce that?
The same way you force the 75-minute parking. You don't. And you weren't going to. We have no mechanism by which to do that, unless we hire somebody. I mean, you could hire somebody all day to, to write parking tickets for 40 bucks. It would cost you more for the parking enforcement person than it would the revenue you'd make off the parking.
What was the cost of the sign, anyway? What's the cost of the signs, and the striping and all that?
That'll have the specific cost of...
Generally speaking, I'm not going to hold it to, I promise.
Probably a couple thousand dollars.
Plus, we'd have to do, then we're talking about doing the other one.
You, you cannot do one without doing the others. I mean, you can't single out one business and say, "We're going to take care of that business."
So, how do we do the other one? I, I don't know. If we had a parking enforcement official, and it was, it would offset the revenues and all the stuff, I see what we're talking about, but it's like, you know, now the gentleman wants essentially a three hours or less parking. I mean, I, I never heard of such a thing that didn't have like a, you know, a quarter machine in it, or something like that. I don't know. I'm, I'm not trying to hurt his business. I just, I don't, I don't see that as a good expenditure of city funds. There's no way to enforce it, anyway. I'm unsure why, you know, essentially, the city should, the city, taxpayer dollars should expend funds, when, you know, unfortunately, he didn't, you know, he created a business a long time ago and didn't set enough parking. You know, I, I kind of agree with, with Dave on this topic. I just, without a true parking enforcement, or any mechanism to solve the problem, I'm unsure what we're really doing, except spending money, which I don't think we should be doing.
And, and Madam Mayor, the other thing is, is, you know, sometimes be careful what you wish for. Because now people may start getting parking tickets in those businesses, and they go, "Well, I'm not going to go there. I want to get a parking ticket. It cost me 40 bucks last time I went to Ellen's, or last time I went to the taco shop." You know, I mean, sometimes people don't look beyond what their own personal need is.
I mean, what happens if we made up a proposal that, if he wanted to pay for? I mean, I don't mind, if he want, I mean, if we're just talking about putting a sign up.
You know, and I was, I was thinking that perhaps we could avoid the sign completely, and just paint, I hate to say the word, but green paint with a three-hour, 90-minute parking limit, without, I, I think the signs are really ugly, and I don't think they are attractive to our community. I'm not sure that our Avenue of Flags needs any more green paint on it. But, but, again, if we just painted the curb with a 90-minute parking on it.
I agree with Mayor Sierra. That's a great idea.
I don't know.
And, but I do think that we have to be able to back it up, all right? So, perhaps we're not going to hire somebody to be working overtime to look and see if that's happening, but in time, one can tell if somebody's abusing it. And with that, it can be reported and up-channeled that perhaps this person needs to be cited. So, at least that will act as a deterrent. And at the same time, you know, at least keep people away for the moment, see how that works. If it gets worse, we increase the enforcement, increase the penalty.
I'm just bringing it back, yeah.
Okay. And the other thing is, is even the business owners are saying, "Hey, you know, a lot of times, there's people in there two hours." So, my, to my point, that, you know, be careful what you wish for, because you may be citing people that are inside the building, in their restaurant, the ones that are making the complaint about it in the first place.
Three-hour parking.
And that's why it would be complaint-driven. Vice Mayor?
I believe that John has asked us to assist him in letting people know those need to turn over. I think Mother Hubbard's would not call on somebody if they want to have the green. And I wasn't quite clear. I think we're only talking about, we've only been asked by John.
Correct.
To paint the green.
Correct. But you can't single out one business owner.
No. I understand. We're not single them out. He only asked us to do it. Like we did, we've got businesses, we've got 15-minute parking over in the Nielsen Center, in, in front of the, with the, they had some In-N-Out issues that they, they've had 15-minute, and they've just asked, and it's, it's really a, the business owner tells the person, "It's the second time you've done this. I'm asking, could you do it? It's, it's green curb." They've, you can get a citation for that. The guy says, "Oh, yeah?" Then he picks up the phone and he calls the sheriff. And if it becomes a problem, we have to negotiate a new deal with the sheriff.
And, you know, we know John's not the only customer. However, he has a good snapshot of those customers who are there. And somebody who participates and probably represents them in many ways.
We're not doing it for everybody, or that, that somebody, I think there were four or five businesses that were caught up with this, but we didn't hear from, Mother Hubbard's is the only one we've heard from, and it sounds like he doesn't care for it. But he might, he might want to do it after he sees whether it works or not for John.
It would be complaint-driven, and it would be up to council to decide whether it's 90 minutes, two hours, three hours. And then it's up to the business owner to call the sheriff.
Okay.
I don't, I'm, I'm just, I, I asked, I bumped into him. I asked him if it was working, if it was any better.
That's the best eyes on the ground.
Yeah.
I have a question for Steve. If you put any sign up, there has to be a resolution from the city council.
There doesn't need to be a sign.
For it to be enforceable. I mean, even a red curb has to have a resolution from the city council, or yellow curb.
Yes. We bring that, we bring that back.
Okay. So, if we do this, and we put it on there, it was a resolution from us. So, it's enforceable.
It would be enforceable. And then just be a question at that point, whether or not there's sufficient evidence in any particular case, if someone challenged the citation.
Right. And, but by, but once again, getting back to my point, be careful what you wish for, because you can't just say, "Oh, that's somebody that's not in my business on public property. They've been parked there more than three hours." Or, now, what if, I see that car's parked there three hours, and I know it's of people that have been in that restaurant for, let's say we make it for two hours, and they've been in that restaurant, and I call the sheriff and go, "Hey, I want you to put a tag on that one."
They tag it, and they come back two hours later.
What I'm saying is, is getting back to my point, be careful what you wish for, because what if I get mad now that I can't park there anymore? And I used to park there for whatever reason. You can't just say, "You have to tag the people with parking tickets that are not in my restaurant."
No, not so.
Because you can say, "Okay, I know those people went in there at 8:00 this morning. That car's been parked there all day." Then call the sheriff out, and then sheriff's going to put a parking ticket on it, for the people that are in the restaurant, from the people that are complaining about it in the first place. Because you can't single people out. You can't say, "Well, you, you can't write tickets to the people that are eating there, because it's public property." You see what I'm driving at? You, you can't just say, "Well, he wants to flush them out of there because it's his, it's become his problem, and wants the city to make a resolution on it." I mean, I have, I have nothing against him, but what I'm saying is, is that if you put it out there, you can't single people out. The Sheriff's Department would also have to, "Oh, oh, they're eating at Ellen's," you know.
If somebody's repeatedly abusing it, you can't single them out, though.
Well, but this is what I'm saying. You couldn't say, "Because people are in the restaurant, you know, you don't write them a ticket."
I don't think anybody's looking to do that.
My understanding...
What I'm saying is, is you can't differentiate between the two.
Well, you can if you're looking out there. I don't think the person in the restaurant's going to be there for more than three hours, but if you're commuting, you will be. So...
And I want to clarify something. If the business owner notices a car there more than two or three hours, and calls the Sheriff's Department, they're going to mark the tire.
Correct.
And then they're going to come back two hours later, three hours later.
Yeah, this is what I'm saying. So, what I'm saying is, we don't really have enough way to enforce this, and, and you're going to have the same problem. You see what I'm saying?
I, I think the problem is going to clear itself up pretty quickly. That, that would be my guess. But I, like I say, I was asked to bring it back to council.
Thank you. You did.
And I'm, I'm looking for a consensus as to how council wants to handle this.
I go along with your idea of painting the curb green.
I agree.
Making, put a 15 in it if you want, but people understand.
How, how long do we let them?
I wouldn't say 15.
You don't, you don't decide that. That's, we've said this, complaint-driven. It's for the business owner. He asked us to get the curbs painted so he could...
But we need a time limit on it.
We need a time limit before he can call. Is it three, three hours?
Three hours. What's wrong with three hours?
Three hours.
What's wrong with three hours? We're, we're trying to knock out commuters.
I want 75 minutes, or 90.
People, people, it, it clearly says, John says, "Sometimes people come in here for two hours. Sometimes they meet there." Okay, so where are they going to park if they have a meeting there? He wants them meeting there.
Well, and then it is also complaint-driven, too.
Right. I mean, it, am I right, or am I wrong, that the whole idea is to keep commuter parkers from...
Yes.
Leaving it there, right?
Yes.
Right. Okay. So, nobody who's commuting is going to be parking there for less than three hours. Three hours is ideal, you know? Really, what, why versus 75? Okay. You know, yeah, I know, that's a lot of tacos, whatever. But, the whole idea is, 75-minute people are not a problem.
They had to be white.
Well, whatever color it is. Car there or from.
Right. Is, is, if we're going to paint curbs, is three hours a, a good number for council? I know you don't believe so.
Well, let me ask, what is the limit for green? Is it an hour and a half?
Normally, it's 15 minutes.
I think we can set whatever.
We'd have to take a little...
It's normal 15 minutes.
I mean, most people know.
No, 90 minutes is standard.
Because usually it says 15 minutes on it. If I've seen green curbs, it says 20 minutes on it. So, you know, I mean, I think it's...
We'd put whatever color was appropriate for the timeframe.
Got it. Just paint the curb. I'd say we could, just reach an agreement, or just come to a consensus and maybe go with two. Just...
That's fine with me. Any way to get past...
Two hours.
Any way to push this through is great.
Two hours.
You have one vote.
Is that a, is that a consensus?
That's great. Yes, two hours is great.
Okay.
Okay.
So, that's the discussion.
We'll bring back a resolution for two-hour parking in front of Ellen's, whatever, whatever color curb is appropriate.
Poke it down.
And it probably will spread, but we... All righty. Moving on to our big item tonight, the budget study session for fiscal years 2017, '18, and '18, '19 biennial budget. Director, Galloway Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, we have the first biennial budget. So, I would like to just start off with talking a little bit about this within the staff report, so I can explain a few things as we go, and then we'll, we'll get into the details. I don't think it'll take that long. This isn't really that big of a budget. And, but I will start with the general fund. And our general fund, we're estimating the general fund operating revenues at $6,604,645, and operating expenditures at just under that, by about $39,000. So, I wanted to let you know then, we'll talk a little about general fund capital improvement projects, because that's part of the general fund operating budget, and here's why. So, we, in this budget, we came up with $1 million-plus on capital improvement projects for general fund. So, what, what we have to do is, we, we're looking at reserves going into this budget study session. We can obviously use our, our net surplus, on, when I come back, I can net it all out. But for, for the budget study session, we're just looking at using reserves for the total capital improvement project, just to make it simple and easier for us to see what they are. So, basically, they go, they're expensed out of, are two, two departments in the general fund. One is non-departmental, and the other one is the storm drain. So, we break it out into those two departments, and then it goes, then it turns around, and goes back in as the same amount of revenue. So, one, one item that we did find is in our, in, within our summary amounts, we did have one error that we're going to change. And I'd like you to know, this is a, a budget tonight, is a study session, so we're changing, it's a changing budget. We didn't find any other errors, so, but one in the summary, if you look at those capital improvement projects, that it, the amount of revenue is not the same as the amount of the expenditure. So, I, we'll, we'll change that.
Are we looking at page 51?
Right now, I'm just reading on the staff report, and we're going to move into that, and I'll show you when we get there. We just, but it's just that amount. All that does is actually, it reduces expenditures, because operating expenditures include, right now, a small amount of, of capital improvements. We went through capital improvements, you know, down to the wire, just to make sure we had them all, and everything was right. So, it was just, at the very end, that just missed going in. So, all it does is, it is actually improves the surplus from 39 to about 89. So, it shouldn't have any real effect as we go through. You'll, you'll understand, I'm sure, what we're doing. But I will make that change on the budget, on the final budget. So, that's basically, you know, what you need to understand, as far as the, the capital improvements right now. They are also subject to change as we go through. You may look at them and make some changes as we go. So, we'll, we'll talk revenue, first, we'll do a, look at the summary revenue. So, basically, the staff report talks about it. I believe we can really just go into it as we look at the, the revenue. We're, we'll be talking about all the TOT and the various items. If it happens to look too high or too low, you can let me know. And then expenditures, I, we can also talk about these in detail as we get through the actual departments. I think that would be probably our best move. That, I think that's probably best. So, moving on through, we will get from, we'll take a look at our summaries, then we'll look at our general fund, and then enterprise funds, and then the other funds that we basically call, there's about five of them, Measure A, and gas tax, and those types, special funds. And just a brief, one more brief thing before we move on, is to talk a little bit about reserves, and we do get... reserves, and we do get revenue every year from all, in all of our funds, but we'll have to use reserves if our operating exceeds it. And in the case of those special funds, the only, most of the expenditures are capital improvements. So, if we're basically, you know, we get a lot of revenue from Measure A, if we don't spend it all, it goes into the reserves, so those would be, you'd expect to spend reserves on capital improvements. So, why don't we move on, and I think we can just get through this. I'd like to go past the fund balance and just go right into the revenues, and that is on page 58. And that starts with our general fund revenue. And let me know if I'm going too fast, because I'm trying to just get through this.
And if anybody has any questions, speak up.
Thank you. So, basically, we've got all our taxes, our fees and permits, our fines and penalties, and uses of money. We have our revenues from other agencies, and then charges for current services. So, we've looked through this and made our estimates based on what we felt was some, looking at prior year, and estimates coming in on our 17, '18, and you know how the next column works, we just add a 2%, we'll revisit it at our second mid-year. So, the only thing I might bring up right now is actually our revenue from our recreation. We're probably going to increase that, and perhaps Kyle could get up and talk a little bit about that?
Yeah. Why is it dipping down instead of going up?
Yes. And I can address that, Madam Mayor, honorable council members. The current year, that 2016, '17, which you see, and comparing it to past years, especially for built-in recreation program trips, going from, you know, average of about $45,000 and dipping down this year. And the reason for that difference is the types of trips that are offered. This current fiscal year, we had three of the larger Colette Vacations trips, which are not running through the city. The participants, the people from the general public who take these trips, make their checks directly to Colette Vacations. And so, no money is actually ever, you know, passed through the city. But we do get that commission that comes in, so we only really see revenue from those trips. Hence, the estimates from past years where we had more recreation-run trips, for instance, Southwest or going to national parks, those ones, the revenues come in from each of those trips to the city, and then expenses go out again for paying for those admissions, et cetera. So, that is the reason why, and actually, it's a little bit different from our initial department head budget worksheets. And so, I think I had on there $45,000 for the revenue for recreation program trips, and $100,000 for the recreation program itself. Overall, the total, still about $140,000 between both of those. I would feel comfortable with, if our finance director would feel comfortable increasing that for program trips back up to $40,000 or $45,000. I was always taught to budget very conservatively for revenues coming in, and then budget with contingencies for expenses. And so, I know we have had well over $100,000 in revenue for the recreation program, but to, again, be conservative on that, I think, at least my recommendation would be to go a little bit lower than that, and maybe $100,000 or $110,000. Just, you know, it would be great, and we have had over that, but I would, again, would recommend conservatively. One example, just to make this come to a concrete example that I know is happening, the fall calendar will have, and it's been advertised in our summer calendar as well, an international balloon fiesta trip to Albuquerque. And that trip, the fee for that is about $2,000 per person. For a single, it's about $1,400 for a double occupancy room per person. And we can take up to 18 spots here. So, if we have 18 singles, that's a revenue right there of almost $36,000. Of course, on the other side, it'll come out in expenses, so we're not going to make a profit of $36,000, but in terms of revenue, right there is more than we've had to date for this year because of those larger Colette Vacations that basically never enter our books because they're going directly to Colette Vacations. So, I believe next year, that number will come back up again to our more average for the last, you know, three or four years. So, that's just to give you an illustration of why that is lower this year, and I'd be confident that we can raise that up, especially for the rec trips for next year. So, any further questions on the reason for that discrepancy?
The built-in rec program, that's a little lower too. Is the, you know, 14, 14, '15 was almost 140, '15, '16 was 173, '16, '17, 127, and then you go to 125, 127 for your estimates for the next two years. Are you expecting programs to decline?
No, I think, again, it's based on that conservative estimate for revenues, keeping that low, hoping and knowing that probably they'll be higher than that, but just, again, not counting our chickens before they hatch.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, that's a good one. I have, no, not for you, Kyle, sorry. Thank you. Is that Jen?
Yeah. I...
Anything else to plan, please?
Thank you very much for sticking around.
Keep yourself from...
I guess. Yeah. I guess I want to see a budget that's not as conservative as trying to be a little more realistic.
May I ask Carolyn a few questions?
Please.
Can we talk about the, so on page 56, and I know you kind of skipped over a little bit, I'm not, I just want to talk about that just for a moment, I want to make sure I understand, because I know you and I had a long chat about this, and I've spent hours reviewing this budget, so.
Okay.
When it talks about fund balance, so, those are essentially the reserves we're talking about, correct?
When we talk about fund balance on this page, because this is analysis of fund balance, this is, it's cash plus property, so it's assets, it's all assets. So, these fund balances are higher than cash, except for general fund, because general fund pretty much has all cash.
Okay, I understand. So, okay, so let's, okay, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Okay, fine. So, on the, let's use the water, the 5.5 million, that's listed under the water fund, correct?
Right.
Okay. So, that 5.5 million is reserves, that is assets, liquid and otherwise?
Plus cash, yes.
Okay. So, what are the, just, that's news to me now. So, what is the non-liquid assets that would be encompassed in that 5? And I'm not looking for every asset, just throw me one or two so I have an understanding.
The water treatment plant.
Okay, perfect. So, really, there is not that much reserves. I assume that water treatment plant is expensive.
Well, if you want to know how much cash, I believe it's 1.5, 1.7.
Okay, perfect. So, let's use that as an example, just for a minute, I want to make sure I understand how this is outlaid. So, when you talk about revenues, and we talk about water in specific, do you want to wait until you get to water?
We could, because...
Let's do that.
Yeah, that's why I said skip, but if we want to go back, we can.
No, that's fine. So, just while we're here, the wastewater fund, I assume that's liquid and non-liquid assets as well?
Yes, it is.
So, what's cash in that account?
That's about, that's a little bit less, I believe, 1.5.
Wow, okay. So, really, I mean, can you, maybe you could help me understand how, because I'm not sure I view the wastewater treatment plant, or the water treatment plant, those assets as liquid, we can't sell them for money.
No.
So, why are they incorporated as reserves?
Well, it's part of fund balance. That's just how governments work, they include everything in a fund balance.
Okay. I don't know, I'll speak for myself, but I would appreciate a liquid reserve, especially when we're running deficits on some of these topics and moving money from reserves into them.
Yeah, I do put liquid reserves when I show you, when we get to the capital improvements, that's where I show, I show you liquid. So, you know, there's no way.
In that account, okay.
We have to know what the cash is, definitely.
Okay, press ahead, I have a feeling you know where this is going.
Okay. So, are there any other questions on the revenue? So, we'll move on and take a look at the expenditures. So, the summary expenditures, I'll give you the page numbers, page 64. This summarizes what we're going to discuss in our, on our next several pages, which is the detail. And I just want to point out that this, where it says last reserve transfer for capital improvements, I will be changing that to $1,002,850. So, that would just lower the expenditures, which is why it improved the surplus.
What are you changing?
I'm going to change, where it says, there's an asterisk at the bottom, it says 001.
Yes, 65.
Yes, and says last reserve transfer, so that 983 is actually, should be 102,8500, so I'll change that. And these numbers, of course, could change as we go through as well, just as the revenue just changed. So, these next two pages summarize all the other funds on page 65. We will just move on, and we can come back to those if we need to, but you'll see them in the detail.
And Carolyn, if you, just on page 64, talk about the non-departmental going from 6.9 to down to 1.6, just to know why that's the difference.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. Okay, this, if you look at the actual amount column, it's, the actual amount column is higher in that year.
I know that.
I know, it's because, we did have a question that came up today, so that's where we know, maybe we need to talk about it.
It is a big difference.
Yes, and that was a real number that we had, because we had to pay out for the RDA.
She still puts salt on the wound.
I know, I didn't. Yep, but the, next year, that column will go away.
Thanks, Carolyn.
Thank you. So, we'll, let's start off with city council. So, we'll just go right, if you look at, we have three pages, of course, if you look, we have our cover page, as most of you know, which summarizes, and then the detail, and then the backup detail. So, maybe if we just go straight to detail, which is page 68. This particular budget doesn't really change, nothing changes too much for city council. So, we appreciate that. You guys are so consistent.
That's us.
That's a good thing.
It's us. City council is good.
Yes, and so, we'll move on to city manager, and we'll go right to page 71. And city managers, basically, there's not any major changes there, very consistent with prior year. So, I'll just keep moving through unless somebody stops me. City clerk, consistent with prior year. Let's see, then we'll go to city attorney. We did increase that a bit, based on just anticipated litigation or legal cost that the city may encounter, but it isn't much. We've kept it pretty similar from year to year, pretty constant. Then, we've got non-departmental. Okay, this one is page 83. And so, we, basically, this one, this includes the benefits, which is, that benefit line item is, just to let you know, is the retirees' health insurance that we pay at $51,000. And then, this also includes the unfunded liability for, that PERS has us pay now, which is for prior year PERS catch-up. And...
You're always 12 months behind on that adjustment.
Yes, that's always in arrears, and we, this is actually even further back, the unfunded liability, they go way back. They've separated it now from the current costs, which is through payroll. And we do include our capital improvement transfers in here, so this is a function of the capital improvements, it grows up the more we have with capital improvements. We'll discuss capital improvements at the end, if we make any changes there, they will be reflected here if it's general fund.
And this also includes the nonprofits that you allocated, as well as the visitors' bureau payments.
And just, is there any statute for cities being protected from the state reaching back? You know, RDA was a different ballgame, but, you know, the state always looks to someone else's pocketbook to balance their budget. Are we, I think it's your question for Steve, are we protected? Do we have a statute that we need to get past so many months to not have them come and say, "We've audited"? You know, CCWA is having an issue with millions of dollars being recaptured from Department of Water to the benefit of CCWA, but it's going to hurt somebody else. I just wanted to know if there's any...
I think there are.
Maybe for a future comment, just, I'd like to know that we're somewhat protected.
There are some protections, and I'd have to take a look at them, and it would depend on the...
Statute of limitations.
Well, it might be some constitutional provisions that would protect us, but it's kind of circumstance by circumstance. So, I can certainly report back at a future meeting on some of those issues, maybe the next budget meeting.
Probably a leak question more than...
And I have a question on this page too, non-departmental expenses. Usually, things like membership and publications are charged to the department, like the city clerk, so I don't understand why we have $10,000 in membership and publications in non-departmental, and travel and training, is it $1,000? What is that doing floating around in non-departmental?
Okay, the memberships are League of Cities dues and miscellaneous, so some League of Cities is here.
That wouldn't be charged to council then?
No, it's always been under miscellaneous for the league, because it's citywide.
Okay.
Yeah, and travel and training is not explained here, so I, it's been in, it's, usually we budget at about $1,000.
Yeah, I just don't...
This one, most of them are in, within the department, so I'd have to go back and see what charges went there, and I can let you know.
Thank you.
I can let all council know.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, because there's not a lot charged against it, so, yeah, we'll take a look at it.
It might be something that we could take out.
Thank you. I'm on 82.
So, that's line item 60710. Okay, so, our next, anyway, I don't want to hurry anybody if you have any other questions.
I appreciate that. This is our most important job.
Yes, and then we're moving on to the most important department, which is finance.
[laughing].
Okay, so, this one hasn't...
County program.
Yeah, I'm only kidding. So, this department, actually, you can see, the numbers have gone down, because, that's basically because we're, we have an entry level, new finance director, and starting at the, with the PEPRA rate, so all of those higher PERS costs go down, so we'll see some advantages here. The other thing, let's see, about this, we, no, we are asking council for some office furniture, and I'll explain that. It's not actually furniture, it's partitions. We were hoping to be able to partition the two desks, and that is, it's included in this budget. One other thing I will mention that's not included that we probably, we may have to enter into is, we're planning on me staying on, just as a contract employee, to help Chanel, so as I'd be on-call, so if those costs, we probably, we need to take a look and see what those are, but we hadn't yet been approved for that, so that'll be coming up.
And that'll be at the next meeting, we'll have the resolution for that.
And so, we'll keep you posted on that. All right, and I think that one went down, so that was a pretty good. Then we've got our public safety budget, and we, what we have done with this is, we did meet with the Sheriff's Department, and we had budgeted a 10% increase.
It's 9.2.
And it's 9.2. They come in and told us, "So, we'll make that adjustment," and that will take it down just a small amount, but that'll be showing on the next budget.
And the sheriff's representatives are in the audience if you do have any questions regarding their contract and budget.
We appreciate your service.
We do.
It hurts, but we appreciate your service very much.
Okay, that looks, sounds good then. So, we're moving on to our library services, and we did discuss that tonight somewhat. And we did enter probably at the very highest we possibly thought we were, very, you know, thinking conservatively that it would probably be very high. So, we're hoping that maybe we can adjust this at some point, and it may not be until the mid-year if it does, if it is going down. I don't believe it'll go up from this.
Do we know...
Do we know what we're going to get back? What will be credited to us yet?
I do not have that yet, so I don't have that information. The city manager and the library director of Santa Barbara are aware of our request, and once they have that, they said they will get that to me. So hopefully I'll have it before May twenty-second when we go down to the budget hearings.
That would be nice. It'd be nice to see the library head, Jessica Calianti.
Madam Mayor, before, since we have the sheriff department representatives here...
Yes.
Would it be appropriate if they could share with us their scope of perhaps the motorcycle program? Is it in, out, going up, going down? Or if, do they have any indication to let us know what we've had in the past?
What the quality of service would be.
Maybe going away, or things that are on the horizon, like are we going to get a helicopter? Just, just curious if you've got, there has to be some discussion.
Since you've sat through this whole meeting so far, we appreciate you coming in.
So Commander Bonner, I'm the North County Division Commander for the sheriff's office. If we get into any specific questions about the costs, I'll bring up our CFO to talk about those, but as it stands, we're, we're still moving forward with providing you the same level of service that you have throughout. We are engaging in some initial discussions about our contracts. Right now, we have five major contracts with cities and then the two national, and every last one of them is different. And I know we have some questions about how come we're paying for X number of FTEs, but Solving is paying for this, and it, it's problematic because of that. The reality is Solving has a little more FTEs, it just doesn't look like that on paper, and we need to fix that. And so one of the things we've initially started talking with, with your city manager about is some initial talks about bringing these contracts, and they all look the same. We also are running into an issue where some of our cities are not paying for a relief factor. You guys are paying for a piece of a relief factor, so is Solving, but we need to, we need to come back, and we needed to discuss that, but that's not something we're doing within what's before you right now.
What's a relief factor?
So a relief factor is, so we, we contract to provide you guys with twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five coverage, irrespective of whether or not somebody takes vacation time, gets hurt, et cetera. In order to accomplish that, you can't do that with more people.
Oh, okay.
So the relief factor is presently, we're at about five-point-four, five-point-five FTEs in order to achieve that twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five service. We're, we're not there right now, but that's something that we need to, that's, that's a discussion that needs to occur within contract negotiations, not, you know, what we've provided to you is to continue providing you with the existing levels of service.
Okay, copy, thank you.
Then, I think, what we've always, I, I think that the, the common denominator or the implement has always been one and a half, always available, one and a half deputies on duty, is that? We used to use that sort of a quantum, but I don't know if you're using that anymore.
Now realistically, what we're providing you with is, is one deputy, twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five, and then on top of that, you guys have a motor that you have specifically contracted for, and that, that motor is, they're here when they're here, but they're not when they're not.
Okay. And that's a juror discretion, not at our...
I mean, you guys could certainly give us some direction through Lieutenant Obrady as to when you would like to see the motor around. I mean, all of that stuff is, is something that you can provide direction on.
When we had the issue in Central with the speeders, I mean, he was very proactive, and I think that has been under better control.
Yeah, the motor, we can move around wherever you guys would like to see him, that's just something you guys can provide.
We've always had that workability, but I wanted to make sure that down the road we might say, well, that wasn't, that wasn't dropped out of your contract, so that's why I was asking for, is there anything changing that we, we don't know about? And so it's one now rather than one and a half. I've always, I've always kind of gone on one and a half.
As far as I know, it's always, it's always been one.
But it's hard to...
Even back when I was a deputy here, many years ago, it was one.
And just elaborate, when I get into negotiations on the contract, obviously the contract will come before the council, but what we've been discussing with the sheriff is what we want will be in the contract. So if we want the motor officer doing specific things, we can put that in. So it, it's a more service provided type of...
Right, and, and one thing that we're going to ask of, of, well, ultimately probably you guys, but through city manager is what metrics would you guys like to see? You know, what, what are the things that you'd like us to report back on? One of the things that we need to improve on is giving you guys that information as to what exactly are you getting for your money, and that's something that we would like that feedback in terms of what you would like to see from us.
Thank you.
So the motor officer is still...
He's all yours.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, Carolyn, I, I...
Moving on?
Yeah, I think we're done with the library.
Yes, we can move on to recreation on page ninety-seven.
Can I ask one question, elaborate? Mark, I sent you an email about that rather huge discrepancy. Did you get anything back from the county on the topic?
All right, refresh me again on that.
Well, offline.
Okay.
Thank you. So recreation is, nothing has changed here, it looks basically the same. One thing we are going to look at, which we, we're talking about earlier but weren't able to change yet, we think maybe the seventeen-eighteen salaries might be low because the estimate is higher, and I think what happens is there's overtime costs that sometimes occur with recreation that we may need to take a look at and make sure we include that, so that might be increased to a degree.
You're saying the salaries that there's overtime?
Mm-hmm.
You pay overtime to salaried employees?
Then, but they're not salaried, those employees.
She's just meaning it's the salary category, not salaried employees.
Yeah, just the salary, sorry, that was my, right. Yeah, we wouldn't pay overtime to any sal, the ones that are management type or salaries, salaried, no.
Thank you.
So I think we can move on, no changes there. Public Works Streetlights is, you know, is what it is, and pretty similar to the prior year. Public Works Engineering, the only comment I'd like to make about this is, there was a question about fifteen-sixteen actual being zero. So what, what we have found is gas tax, we found that these costs are in, were in gas tax fund, and they are allowable in gas tax fund. So for sixteen-seventeen, we haven't yet, we're determining whether we're going to get, get the money. We do know we get the gas tax money, which is the highway users' tax in sixteen-seventeen, but we're not sure about seventeen-eighteen. So we put these costs in the general fund, but we do plan to move them to gas tax. However, we haven't done that yet until we absolutely know we're getting that funding, and it, at, pretty much when the budget went to press, so to speak, we didn't have that information. So we put, left this in general fund. This was always in general fund until the gas tax auditor came and explained that we could use these for, and pay out of gas tax, this, these, for these costs.
Now, does that include the engineering services?
Yes.
No, not, not M&amp;S, no.
No, yes, it does.
Well, not, not, not for the, well, this is part of my problem, Mayor Sarris, when we get to the CIP, M&amp;S is getting it to the tune of probably about five-hundred thousand dollars, something like that, just rough calculations, top of my head, don't hold me to that. This does, these engineering services are not outlined per se, all of the engineering services.
No, 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 I, I actually...
This is a subsection.
I wrote down all the contract services here...
Okay.
That I was reading to add up to.
Right.
Because I was curious.
Most of them are in the CIP budget, but that's not delineated like the rest of this budget. And I've talked to Rose about that, so, well, I'm, we'll have a long conversation, we'll get to CIP, so I'm waiting for Carolyn to get there, but, go ahead, sorry.
Well, I guess my question is, under engineering services, fourteen-fifteen actual expenses were sixteen-hundred, fifty dollars. Fifteen-sixteen, thank you very much for coming.
Have a good day.
Fifteen-sixteen, zero, because it came out of the gas tax.
Right.
Sixteen-seventeen, the budget was twenty-five thousand, but we've spent little under eight thousand, but then proposed for seventeen-eighteen and eighteen-nineteen goes back up to twenty-five and twenty-five-five. And I'm curious as to why, if we're not really spending that money, why are we putting it in there?
We have that in there, because that's, when, when we get requests throughout the year for safety issues, looking at Second Street or, or certain areas of Rancho de Maria, this is the fund in which we charge to do those reviews. We don't know what requests may come throughout the year, and it, and it, and it just varies.
Okay, it just seems, it just seems kind of high to me because we've never broken ten thousand.
I think there's been a few years prior where, where we have, where we did a lot of safe, school safety studies with all the crosswalks, and that might be actually the fifteen-sixteen that has been moved here, because we, it's not like, it's not that we didn't have expenditures under those.
Right, they went, that got moved into the gas tax.
Yeah, it looks like, it looks like we spent eleven, five, and I look, I'm looking at gas tax for fifteen-sixteen.
And that could, if, if council wishes to reduce that, that's, that's fine as well.
So, can I actually, so I have a few questions about this. Now I have a clear understanding what you're actually spending this money for, which makes sense, I'm not questioning that. What has me in a little of a loss is, we have all the, we have the serious bulk of engineering services broken out in CIP, being expended under the CIP to the tune of five times this, or whatever it may be, sign, you know, magnitude's more than this, but this we have greater detail on, so is there a way we could bring them together? If it's an engineering service, why is one broken out but the other isn't?
Yeah, I think we can, we can take our capital improvement budget and add to it a backup so that we can spill it out.
Is your, you, like it for each category, a description of what it is?
Yeah, so I, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is we have an engineering services here that does certain things, I get it, and I'm not questioning what they're being used for, but we're spending a whole bunch of money in CIP for engineering services, but it's not spelled out here, so it's...
Absolutely, we can do that.
Okay.
Right, yeah, definitely, these don't relate to capital improvements. They're, they're safety studies.
Engineering services are engineering services, though.
No, that's true, and it's spelled out. I just want to make it clear on this one that this had, with, nothing to do with KIPS.
Yeah, and, and I would like to see that one go down a little bit, maybe to fifteen-thousand.
Okay, we could do that.
Okay.
With regard to the...
That's on the six-zero...
Carolyn, the... The gas tax, do we get a percentage of, because the governor raised this twelve cents, that this, the pump's going up twelve cents. Are we, is that going to affect us, and have we incorporated that? Because that just happened two weeks ago.
Yeah, and this is, that's a different, let Mark SB, that's SB twenty-one.
Yeah, SB one, that's probably, we're probably not going to see revenue until the eighteen-nineteen, because it's going to go in...
I thought they'd already voted, maybe?
Well, they did, but we're, but we're not going to start seeing stuff rolling in for a little bit. We, I met with Dave Mullinex yesterday at our managers' meeting, and he kind of briefed us on that, so...
So we'll get an update on that.
Yeah, we'll get an update on that.
I just thought, this was paid a couple of weeks ago, and all of that has happened since then.
And we are planning a two-year budget, but that's, again...
So we, once we get more information on that SB one...
You keep saying they're breathe, living, breathable...
Yeah, but I...
Yeah.
Budgets, they'll be changed.
Consumers are going to be, you know, is, is the city going to benefit from it? Because we've been made...
We actually, we do have, we have the spreadsheet from Dave of how much we're getting estimates, so that'll be worked in at some point, but at this point, we're not putting it in because it's really...
It's going to go crazy when the rate...
Right.
The morning we left Mor Bay, sixty-nine cents a gallon difference at the pump from Buellton to San Luis Obispo.
Lower, higher?
Could you put a copy of that in, in my box, what Dave Mullinex, what the, what he estimates?
Yes, yes, I'll put it in everybody's box.
I'm really curious to see that, yeah.
So, let me, let me resend my comments on the engineering services for now. I think maybe we'll have a greater conversation when we get to CIP, so let, maybe just couch it till then, okay?
Okay, so, and H, highway user tax, separate, we'll talk to you about that next time when we bring the budget back. All right, so then Public Works General, and here's where we include salaries of our Public Works employees, and, and also Rose, engineer, city engineer would be split in the, in this fund, among other funds. This one, oops, I don't, do you have any questions on that one?
The operational supplies, Public Works General, is that their, does that include their uniforms? I know, oh, never mind, I see laundry uniforms up at the top, never mind. Thank you, Carolyn.
Okay, sure. So I will move on, yeah, this went up for contract services and just the various other items that are pretty much part of operations.
Is that page ninety-one?
One-oh-seven.
Oh.
Seven, yeah, one-oh-seven.
On the contract services.
There's quite a few explanations on the back if you want me to, you know, if I can answer anything, any questions you may have. Okay. You see the same, okay, actually, contract services stayed the same, sorry about that.
Rose is watching.
And that really doesn't, and that really does have anything to do with engineering either. I mean, it's, it's janitorial service, security, pest control, yeah.
Yeah, she's still on top of it.
I didn't mention it at council comments two meetings ago, and I did talk with you, or did I talk with Rose about the condition, the mirrors in all of the bathrooms are about twenty percent is gaga, so either cut them shorter or get new mirrors, because...
Where?
We're using a lot of, every public restroom in the park has, has got decay, it's a best, we have toothaches at the bottom of the mirror. Everything else is clean, the mirror looks horrible, all of the mirrors look horrible. And...
Put some pretty stickers in.
Yeah, we could put some visit view stickers.
Mm-hmm. So we'll move on, if you don't mind.
If we just budget for new mirrors, they're probably five-hundred...
Yes, and I, I had talked to Rose about that, so her and I were having discussions of that after you talked to me.
Thanks.
Stormwater is on page one-twelve. Let me know if you have any questions on that. That's, pretty much the storm drains are about, and around the city. We have some cleaning and retrofit and outfall repairs, re-establishment of storm drains, but we'll get to those on capital improvements. This is where they, we do a transfer out. Parks, Parks includes all of our different Oak Park, Riverview Village, Village Park, we added Village Park actually, but we don't, you can see that that expenditure's coming in, in, actually, eighteen-nineteen.
Yeah, the developer would be responsible for maintaining the park for one year, once it's in place, and then we will take over maintenance.
Just that one?
Which one?
Yes.
Village, Village.
Village Park, yes.
I'm, I'm curious about the golf course renovation. Again, we've spent forty-eight-hundred dollars, eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars, nine-thousand dollars, and the budget is twenty thousand and ten thousand.
Yes, so I have monies in there for slope repair, if we want to do that, any other tree replacements, things like that would go to that park. If there's additional other repairs that's necessary, that's not just for the grounds, it's for the building as well. For example, we've got roof repairs that eventually need to be made on, on that.
And just about, because the slope, that has evolved from the homeowners' association, really, they've always completed, we've been pretty responsible for our section, but are we getting any participation from them, or does the property line go from the sidewalk to us?
We, we, we stop at the property line, so we only maintain the slope that is within...
No, I, I understand, but I meant the property line towards the street. Is it, how much of the slope is our, because that was the design of the park?
Well, top of the street, on Six Flag Circle, we, we maintain about eighteen inches or so behind the curb, along, along, yes, along the entire Six Flag Circle. But there's the slope part that's adjacent to the golf course that goes behind, you know, the eighteen inches, so that portion that's within the golf course, that entire slope is ours, well, part of the golf course to me.
And the homeowners, they're, they're not doing anything.
No, only on their portion.
Because I know Mike's been trying to be a good neighbor, but he said, you know, I have to, that's a, that's expensive, but he's doing it.
And they've been maintaining that slope, right.
Okay.
I just think, I just think that the maintenance repair for golf course, Oak Park, Riverview are a little bit higher than they really need to be. I mean, I'm looking at what we've spent in the past, and I can see that the expense might go up a little bit, but compared to what we have spent, the expense seems much higher, proposed.
Okay, we'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
Sounds good. So our next department is Public Works Landscape Maintenance. If we could ask you to look at page one-eighteen.
could ask you to look at page 118. That one, there hasn't been too much of a change there. It has, we do see some, let me see what those increases are from. We do have some contract services there, which is Valley Gardner, which is the, and this is for the common landscaped areas of the city and portions of 246.
Again, I think the contract services, I think, I have had nothing but compliments about Alan and his, and his work, just incredible, but I think the maintenance repair is, is a little high for the next two years as well.
And for that, there's a lot of, what's not included in Alan's contract is all the repairs of irrigation, sprinklers, trees that are down, those are in excess of what his contract is.
Right, and that's why I said, I don't think there's anything wrong with the contract services, but the spending that we've done has been thirteen hundred, sixteen hundred, eight hundred, and you've got a ten thousand and ten thousand two hundred proposed. I understand that you want to be ready in case anything comes up, but I, I think it's, it's probably a little more than we need in the budget.
We'll take a look and see if we can bring that down.
Yep, we will, we will fine tune.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to the last department of...
Yeah, no, okay, little comment there. Alan, because I've, you know, Alan feels bad because he says, I go out there and people have vandalized the electronics, and it's like he's, it's his fault, but he's the bearer of, he repairs it, and then the bill comes, and this is why we have it. I don't know if that has anything to do with it, but I, I think until we can find some better system, and maybe there's, you know, maybe at a league thing, we'll see whether there's better monitoring or control of people vandalizing the, the electronics for running the...
Aren't the electronics locked?
Well, that's until they break it. That's, that's, you know, the vandals have been around, and, and I just, I wanted to make sure that we, everyone's aware that, you're right, ten thousand is a lot of money, but so is a hundred thousand. You know, the time they tore the benches out of the park.
No, 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 when you, yeah, when you need it, you need it, but...
It's an ongoing thing with the electronics.
The budget can always be re-looked at, too. If you have a budget, it's something that can always be reworked.
If it goes, I mean, if we need to do more, it just, the budget goes, it just goes over budget, and then we adjust later, so...
And we can adjust it mid-year as well, we could do that.
But I didn't want, I didn't want someone thinking that it was the, you know, the bearer, the repair person.
I did not, I said nothing but good things about Alan.
But I wanted to give him credit for dropping everything and fixing the things as they come about, because I've, I've crossed him, you know, at the park, and he goes, geez, you know, I didn't plan this today, but everything's got to stop until this works.
He's done a great job.
And you complimented him.
Okay.
Council, we're on page 121, and it's our last department of the general fund, planning community development. Let me know if you have any questions on here. We budgeted in accordance with our prior year, with our contract planner, Cosmott, and we, and we budgeting staff salaries for the planning director, even though...
At some point, if we hire a full-time planning director, it's in the budget, so that's why we always keep that in there, but we...
Do we need that?
I would keep that in there. If for some reason I move on, you'll need a planning director and a city manager, and you have it in the budget, and you don't have to do any adjustments or anything like that. And we stay under budget that way, too. I mean, we don't get up to the totals, but it's good to have the position funded.
Yeah.
Carolyn, could you go to page 120 real quick, if you mind?
Yeah, no, not at all. Yes, I'm on page 120. What is this? So this is the, the planning department, and this is our cover page?
No, I mean, what is that for?
So are you looking at, are you looking at the general fund, just the, the cover page where, this is where we summarize and estimate?
That's not the whole planning department, it says community development planning.
It really is just the planning department.
It's just the planning department.
It's always been described as community development planning?
Oh, this, this isn't visioning or anything like that?
No, no, it's been that way for years. That's what that is. All right, well, we shall move on to the enterprise funds.
Oh, now we're getting into bad news.
Oh, yes, definitely. So we've got our wastewater operating fund, and this is basically, there's no major changes here in this fund, the operating fund, all of our operations to run the wastewater treatment plant. But also, we include in here, of course, the transfer for capital improvements, and in this case, we, we have to have a transfer that will also help to fund the, the, just the operations, because we don't have enough money yet. So in a comparison from last year, this is less needed, and that's because of the, the rate increase has helped very much. So we continue to keep costs down and work as hard as we can to do that.
All right, so, all right, Carolyn, here we go.
Okay.
Okay. So, I'm not going to get too involved here, I just want to make sure I understand. So, you have...
What page are you on?
Well, first, I just want to talk general numbers in the overview and not detail wastewater.
So at 125, then?
I'm actually on 56, to be honest, but I'm going to jump back and forth.
Okay.
Okay? So the waste, the wastewater fund expends, expenditures account for, I don't know, so here it's proposed, oh geez, I'm getting more and more lost here. The proposed revenue, the expenditures are 1.23 million.
Operating...
The revenues are eight hundred and ninety thousand.
Yes.
So we have about a four hundred thousand dollar, five hundred thousand dollar transfer out of the liquid reserves, which accounts for one-third. Am I understanding that right?
Mm-hmm, of what their, what the reserves are.
Perfect. So, so help me with the projected wastewater expenditures for follow-on year, because I'm having trouble, if I am reading those right, which I'm having trouble understanding where those are being, where are those in the, oh, let me go to expenditures and revenues. Here they are. Wastewater operating, okay. So the operating expenditures are four hundred thousand dollar, no, wrong, a combined 2.3 million dollars. And the revenues projected for wastewater are, so there's another, essentially, it's going to increase to the tune of a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars per year, so the reserves will be completely depleted in the next two and a half to three years, according to the estimates? Am I, are my numbers about right?
I, I wouldn't say that exactly, because we, first of all, it's hard to predict, but we do see a decrease in going into reserves. So we do feel that there will be a decrease in going into reserves, so...
Okay, so...
Are you, what page, you're on page 56, or are you looking at another page?
I'm all over the map, so I'm looking at, I'm looking at page 60, which has the revenues.
Okay.
And then I'm looking at page...
Councilmember, what we, could we do this? Could we go through the detailed departments?
Sure.
And then we'll go back to those summaries, because I think, then I think it'll, we can all be back there, and I can go at the same time.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
No problem.
So we're looking at operating, and just to let you know, there is a deficit in the operating fund, but we do hope that that deficit will, will be less and less every year with the rate increases, but it will take a few years. So moving on to wastewater capital, page 130, and the, now, I'll explain a little bit about the capital fund. So we now have a separate capital fund, so we segregate our connection fees in here. So connection fees are supposed to be used for capital projects, and, and actually, there's even some, some legal, legal language that we have, we should use them to actually improve capacity, so not repairs as much. So there's, we have to really watch this. So anyway, we can use our, our connection fees. We're going to go back to summary later, so we can go back to that, we look, we'll take a look. So the transfers will be, will be offset by the connection fees, but we still need to go into reserves. But we'll talk about that in a little while, just to let you know that we're budgeting for 17, 18, six hundred and fifty thousand, that would be for capital projects.
I'm sorry, just to clarify this item, so where is that in this section? It's not, is it in this section?
So if you go, if you look on page 131...
131, okay, hold on. Oh, okay, I see.
So basically, we're transferring out 650, so that, that's the net between the connection fees and the reserves. Once we get back up to revenue and the summary sheets, it'll be more, it'll be easier to understand, but just this main thing here, we're spending wastewater capital is for capital projects.
Okay, so I'll make sure I understand then, just, just so it's clear in my head. On page 126, the operating expenditures for, the operating expenditures is to maintain, absent the capital expenditures, one point, essentially, seven million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, got it?
Yes.
Then I'm going to also add in the capital expenditures for 17, 18, which is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and the capital expenditures are what's essentially devoted to CIP?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Okay, Tom.
Okay, so we'll move on to water.
Doesn't get any better, Foster.
Oh, I know it doesn't, I've been looking at this for hours and hours and hours.
So the only thing that we, that does get better is that because of the rate increases, this will help the, these funds, from one year to the next. And we see pretty much the same thing, there's, there's nothing too new with the water. We do see an increase in the state water payment, that is the state water project line item, nothing we can do about that.
But CCWA is working hard to...
Boy, they're expensive, too.
Right, we'll, we'll work with them to make sure we have our number accurate, but we, we're pretty sure that's what it is.
But sixty, sixty-five million to four million, it was less than five percent.
So moving on to water capital, is the, basically, the same thing that we will go, in water capital, we're going to transfer out 680. So that would be the difference between what we have in connection fees.
Okay, and this 680 and 475 total, that's going to be explained in the CIP, exactly where that money's going?
Yes, we'll explain this in CIP, exactly. And basically, other funds, we're moving on to other funds, and these are, are just the last few funds, and these funds we've talked, we've talked many times through, about tonight, because we're starting off with, we haven't talked about housing, but housing is one of our funds that we receive, we've received money through the years, and it comes from, basically, those are developer fees, I believe, in housing?
Housing in lieu fees for, yes.
Yeah, so we, and we budget 3,000 every year, and those help with seniors.
The mobile home repair for seniors.
Exactly, and that, that's going real well, and I, we, the finance director works with Pam Nico, and it works out very well.
Yes.
And then gas tax, gas tax, except for the annual street report, the only other expenses are the capital improvement projects to be discussed. Move on to the TDA grant, or also known as LTF, Local Transportation Fund.
Sorry, can I, did you cover the street maintenance? Did you pass over, did you miss, did I miss that, or am I ahead of you?
Let's see, street maintenance, the annual street report?
With the gas tax.
No, hold on.
Um, yes, that's a good point. So, street maintenance versus, so that's what we were discussing as far as like, in the Public Works Fund, that those costs, there were engineering and traffic studies, is that what you're talking about, councilmember?
No, so I'm on, are you on page 146, or are you, oh, gas tax?
I'm on page 147, and so I will just add one, this is, this is where I would budget in that general fund, if I can, I'll take it out of general fund, those costs, which was the 10,000 and 85,000, that was engineering, street studies, anything to do, engineering to do with street studies is allowable in here. So once we feel, once we feel confident that we will get our, our highway users' tax money, we'll bring that over, and I should be able to determine that within the next two weeks, by the time we come back for council.
Okay.
So be prepared, possibly, we'll make some changes in this fund.
So can I, can I ask you a question on this item?
Sure.
Okay. So I'm kind of at a loss, these are all expenditures under gas tax, fund gas tax, but I have from the revenue sheet, ninety-three thousand dollars in revenue.
Correct, so it's reserves.
So I'm trying to figure out, okay.
And I'm, I'll go over that on the very last page, is the fund balance, which is, which is actually the equity, the cash, we'll show you. And we'll show you where, how much cash we, we anticipate for gas tax to have by the time we end the year, this year. So there will be some reserves.
Okay.
I hate to keep putting you off, but I think...
No, 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 it's fine, I've never done this before, please, I'm not, you're not offending me at all. Keep putting me off, seriously.
Okay, thank you. And moving on to page 150, we're almost done, and this, this one, we'd like to just mention, in the local transportation fund, there are some capital improvement projects, but there are also, this is where we fund the Breeze Extension Pilot, the Long Oak Wine Country Express, the Dollar Ride Subsidy, and Bikes and Trails Reserve. This is where we take some, the money, we get money in for bikes and trails and keep, keep it in reserve, so we have enough to fund one of the capital projects we'll talk about for this, this budget year, because we've got some money in there now.
And, and I'm wondering if we need to, after I've been telling you where we need to cut, 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 possibly, bikes and trails to increase that. I mean, we're almost at a point where if, if the property is developed, you said the middle of next year you're thinking, at the end of industrial?
Possibly, the two projects that are there.
The two projects, that we actually have a connecting from industrial to Avenue of Flags along the River Trail, and it would be nice to have more than 4,000 a year put into a fund to make, I mean, that seemed to be a really big priority for residents.
I know. The reason we put 4,000 is that's about the amount of revenue we receive, so we do that...
So that would be in capital improvement.
Yeah, and but we...
This is where I get real, this is where it gets real, this is where it gets real dicey, I've, yeah.
But we, but we will continue to look at reserves, if there are any reserves, we could always transfer that to bikes and trails.
Thank you.
So we'll take a look at that and see if there's any way.
At this juncture, could we have a comment that perhaps this would be an opportunity to, as people come to have bike events in this city, that we pledge some revenue from them to help with this, since they're kind of conjunctive? They come here because we have facilities, and if we're, we've got a design...
How are you going to hold, how are you going to hold visiting cyclists to something like that?
I'm not, I'm talking about the event, if they have, they have fundraisers, you know, if they, we should just say, we need to start putting some money in, we're talking about investing money in the perimeter of the city for the benefit of the bicycle community and trails, trails. So I'm just saying, it's a, it's a revenue stream, not nearly what we're going to be spending, but I think we should make a comment about our, they want to come and use it, do we then have a fee? Maybe we establish a rental fee? We don't charge rent?
Rental fee for what? For using a trail?
Yeah. Okay.
I've never, I've never seen that on, on most of the public trails, but...
Yeah, most of the trails are local, I mean, most of them are going to be run by local riders anyway, and...
You know, there are some rider groups, and perhaps, once they hear that we are, we are intent on building the trail, that they might want to contribute. I mean, they may, I mean, that would be totally up to them.
Get the idea.
That would be totally up to them, right, yeah.
I'm not opposed to that idea, I think I'd rather see it be built first, though, devote any money toward that upfront, at least.
Where's that 700,000?
This is my idea.
Okay, council.
Moving on.
Wait, I got one question.
Okay, go ahead.
Where's that 700,000 under, transfer out CIP, where's that 700,000 coming from? The one issue was just on.
150?
150, right. Where's that 700,000 coming from? Where's that seven hundred thousand coming from?
Let me take a look at trails.
The six forty-five?
Sixty-nine one hundred.
Yeah, I'm looking at that, but I'm not seeing, where's seven hundred thousand?
Well, you got it budgeted ninety-five thousand and then six hundred thousand.
Ah, I see. Transfer out CIP.
So that's the North Avenue.
Line sixty-nine one hundred.
Go to page, go to page one fifty-one, Dave, and that's a transfer out to the CIP. So that's what I've been, she keeps delaying me, this is what we're, we're all coming to a head here. North Avenue Flags parking lot.
Of the parking lot.
So, but that doesn't answer his question, though. He asked where it's coming from.
Yeah.
So that was good, that was good to explain that a little bit. But that money comes from, seventy-five thousand comes from general fund. It's a general fund transfer. And that's, you'll see that in the capital improvement projects, you'll see this. But, and the twenty thousand is going to be for, as we'll go through the capital improvement, we'll explain that. It's a, that one is actually going to come from this fund. There's a, and that's because we have in the reserves, twenty thousand, reserved for bike and trail. That's just because we've saved it through the years, and it's a twenty thousand dollar expenditure for Saninaz. Let me, it's a river trail, Saninaz. Saninaz River Trail.
The one I'm talking about is eighteen nineteen proposed is six hundred thousand.
Oh, okay, the eighteen nineteen, six hundred thousand? Well, we haven't got that funded yet, because that one's just the, you know, that's two, the two-year budget. So we, we're not sure exactly, but I'm going to defer to Rose, and she, if she has an idea on that one. That might have been, that was one of yours, I think.
Where's it coming from, and where's it going, is my question.
It's going for a parking ride up on the north end of the avenue, across from Caltrans.
That one's for seventeen eighteen. So eighteen nineteen is, has, is just there for a placeholder, and we don't go into a lot of detail on that second year.
And that's, that's the estimated construction cost at this time for the North Avenue parking ride facility.
For the parking lot.
Correct.
Maybe.
And that's, that's the estimated construction cost.
For, I'm sorry, the estimated construction cost for what?
The North Avenue of Flags parking ride. That secondary parking ride at the very, on the Caltrans property.
So just, is that, so help me, I'm not trying to talk about CIP, I promise, but, so on that topic, is that a council-based prioritization? Or is that a transportation requirement needed item as part of capital infrastructure improvement?
Well, that project was a council request several years ago. So we went through a land acquisition, yeah, discussion.
So that six hundred thousand could be reallocated for something else if the council decided. It's not critical for capital infrastructure improvement.
Right, and right now, the funding source for that, although it's identified through this LTF and general fund, we don't have specific, the potential funding source for that would be like the Measure A regional monies, Prop one B monies, and we have those different grants.
I get it, I'm not, right now, we're, I'm past sources of money. It seems like we're, we have few of those and a lot of the others, so, okay.
Yeah, I can, I can say that the six hundred thousand in eighteen nineteen would not likely be from reserves. That would have to come in from some kind of grant, because we don't have that kind of reserves in this fund.
That's where I was getting at.
Mm-hmm, yes. And so we'd take a look at that as we get closer to the.
Dedicating.
Did council have any other questions on that? So we'll move on to transportation planning. And that fund is contract services as well for forty-five thousand. And, I think that's general fund. Yeah, general fund also, does it transfer for that?
Now, what kind of transportation planning? What kind of, I see we've been, I mean, the budget is pretty much standard all the way through the years, but what do, what does transportation planning, what do, what does that involve?
Right, that's, so that's any coordination services with SB CAG, MNS regarding transit, bus shelters, Caltrans work, like, for example, the coordination with the striping and the parking restrictions on two forty-sixth, that's usually dedicated to this particular fund.
Will we ever get to a point where we've pretty much planned everything out, and we won't need it, or not really?
Not as long as Caltrans runs through the city.
Thank you.
But basically, that's coordination.
I want to be an optimist, I want to figure, we know our roads.
I have a question for the bus stops. There's one bus stop across from, I think it's Burger King. It flickers all through the night. That's the only one I've seen, and while we're budgeting, is that our responsibility, or is that someone else's?
It is ours, and that's the only one that has a light at this point, and it's solar powered. And we have been repairing it frequently, so.
I know, I keep getting complaints on that one. I just, Jerry McGurran just sent me a note, did you get one? He liked to see lights on all of those stuffs.
And I'm wondering, why can't we fix that? But it, should we change out the solar? It's silly, if it's solar and there's, there's a tree over it, I think there's a tree, so it can't ever get recharged.
We have people that use it in the hours.
Yeah, so we'll take a look at it.
I didn't know if there was an alternative, or is it?
There is no power source there, so, solar or batteries.
Well, since this is a budget item, I thought maybe we should fix it.
Okay. Moving on, Carolyn, moving on.
Okay, well, I think we're on our last, our last fund. So, and then we'll be moving into the capital improvement. Measure A, and we all understand that that's through SB CAG, State of California, and that mostly includes transfers out, which are capital improvement projects, with the exception of LTF, this, this fund, Measure A does fund LTF. So there are, there's some funding that goes over there besides the bike and ped, that comes in automatically.
LTF.
Yeah, LTF.
The transit and the bike fund that we just discussed.
Yeah, the one, local transportation fund is what it stands for.
So these, these proposed, the measures, and I know you're going to explain all this in the CIP, but, you know, we're spending about five hundred, six hundred thousand, and then we get to twenty eighteen nineteen, and the proposed is a million six six. That's kind of like a wish list?
Yes, right. Yeah, when Rose gives me her capital improvement projects, she, she lists out five years. So I looked at the current year, which was the seventeen eighteen, and then what she had for the next year.
So maybe pushing it back a little bit, too.
So every year, I reevaluate the list. What's not reasonable or feasible at that time, I push out another year. So for example, the parking ride, by mid-year, we might realize, you know, we're really nowhere closer to getting to construction, so that number will slide as well. But at this point, looking two years out, that's the number, right.
Got it, thank you.
Maybe for Rose and the CIP, though, because she's the only one that keeps it.
Oh, my gosh, we didn't, we didn't have that for a long time. Truly appreciate it, Rose.
Very helpful. So we'll move on to the CIP.
Do you leave your notes if you're going to retire? So we, we have no idea where that list is.
Foster has my notes.
Well, and I like Foster's idea of looking at it, too. But, go ahead, Carolyn.
That's good, okay, well, we'll move to capital improvements. We're on page one fifty-nine, we're almost done, and then we can go back over anything we need to talk about. Here, here is the list of twenty seventeen eighteen, eighteen nineteen projects. And on the following page, we'll look at five years. But this one breaks it out into the funds that will cover the projects. It's pretty simple. And the general fund, as you can see, there's the one oh two eight five hundred, that's what is the plan. So if that is any, now, we don't always spend all of this money, so we're budgeting it, though. And if it doesn't get spent, then it just gets rolled forward into the next year. And in some of the cases, we did try to put a, if you see the kind of number one, that if you look at the bottom, there's, it says carryover, so we, we just want it, you, council to know that some of these are, have been carried over from one year to the next. So it may have been budgeted the same amount last year, if we didn't get to it, and it's budgeted again this year. So our reserves stayed the same in reality last year, if we didn't, if we didn't spend the money. So here we have it. Would you like me to go through them, or do you want to just ask me questions if they, if there's any questions on, on these?
Maybe a thought process, just asking Mark or yourself, previous organizations, once something has been pushed forward for, say, five years or seven years, should it just be deemed, remove it? Because, or how effective is something like this?
I think it's case by case, because it could be something that's.
The parking ride has been, I've been told they're never going to build it, but we keep planning.
Correct, and if the council decides it's not appropriate.
I don't think, Caltrans is just saying that that was going to be a major problem with people pulling off to go in there. I don't know what the design is, maybe they had a different design.
No, that's, the city is, the city is designing that.
Okay.
So when we had our initial submittal for that, the plan check comments back were many pages long, requiring all sorts of stuff. So.
Effective or not effective, or doable or not doable?
It's just become lower in our priority as far as what work gets done in immediate terms.
And that's kind of why I asked that, because.
If council decides we don't want to pursue it anymore, let us know, and then we can, that, it can fall out that way.
Along those lines, I, I talked to Rose a lot about this, and this is a, this is a really good start. I, so some of the recommendations I had were, this is nowhere near delineated or provided fidelity as the rest of the budget, so I think we need to work, work toward that. I think, I think we're all in agreement on that, especially line item by line item. But I think just to piggyback on Ed's item, and I think this would be key for the next week, I would like to see what of these items are council items, and what of these items are capital, critical capital infrastructure items? Because those are delineated, right? And some we have, some we clearly have discretion, well, we have discretion overall, but I get it, but some we have more direct discretion over, while others, we probably need to consider more seriously, if you will. Because I'm having trouble delineating what, what is what out of this topic. And then, to further that piece, I mean.
First, I'm sorry, I think we can agree to that point as well. So I think the first two points, I think, are easily taken care of in the.
Okay, cool, cool, so just continuing on, on this, I want to say my problems, because I, I like this. I'm not trying to, like, I know this is baby steps, and we're getting there, so Rose, don't, don't take it all personally, I'm attacking you. Carolyn attacking you, so I guess I, it goes from finance to council.
Did you really attack him?
Council, finance to council, back to public works. Okay, so just continue along the train of thought, though. We are expending a lot of money from reserves from these things. And I, and I get it that it needs to be done, and I get that we have capital infrastructure problems that haven't been attended to in a decade, if not more. But nonetheless, we're still talking about reserves fifty, thirty-three to fifty percent of the higher reserve fund in some cases. And so I think it would be really good if we had some concept, like, you know, I'm entering new, right? And I'm supposed to be a steward of the money, and I know, I'm going to take your word for it, but I would like some sort of reasoning on why the massive expenditure and the massive take of the reserve for some of these funds. So if the roads, maybe the wastewater, whatever it may be, I mean, if, you know, Rose, I know we had that chat, like, there are serious problems, and I know you had put a brief together of some of them, but I would like to know what the triage is, like, hey, look, the reason we're taking thirty-three percent of the reserve this year is because the sewer hasn't been touched in fifteen years, and the pipes are decaying, and I don't know what it is. I'm just throwing out a random example I made up in my head. But I think that would be enormously helpful, because just when I look at revenue, and I want to go back to that later, just while we're on this topic, but, I mean, these numbers are huge. I mean, this budget is red, we are red. I mean, I don't know how else to be more clear on that topic. And, and the reserves, that number at the top is a fallacy, really, as long as we can sell the wastewater plant. I mean, I get, I get how amortization works and depreciation and why, I get why you do it, but that's not really, that's not really de facto when we start talking about dollars and cents. So here we are, we're in the red, we're spending huge amounts of reserves, and I really don't know why, besides the fact that we need to fix stuff.
And that, that's basically it, we haven't, yeah.
So some detail on why we're fixing stuff may, would be super beneficial. And I'm not saying that she's wrong, I'm sure she's doing the right thing.
And I think that's easy to do, because we've had not done maintenance on a lot of facilities for twenty years. And I think that can be outlined in the capital improvement plan. And, and part of the water and sewer rate increases help draw down, so we don't have the, the use of the reserves, so they don't draw down as quickly.
Peace.
Yeah, I'm just trying to explain, that's how we can try to explain.
And I want to, I want to go back to that, I want to go back to that, just while we're here, so, I think we talked about some of, so if we get to some detail on why, and I'm not saying we need to go through every project, but I think the ones where we're spending five hundred thousand, I mean, the ones where we're really spending a lot of money, in some cases, a million dollars and five hundred thousand, you know, quarter, you know, those, like, I'd like to know, you know, for the three or four huge projects in here, why are we doing it? You know, well, hey, the state of sewer is, huh, huh, you know, and I think that would be really helpful going into next week.
Mm-hmm.
At least for me, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but.
And Rose, that's, that's doable, right?
Right.
I can explain each one.
We can put descriptions underneath of each of these to help.
And beyond description, like, you know, we need, you know, you're part of the team, I need to know what the triage is.
No, we get it, not just the description, but the reasoning.
Yeah, like, this is the number one priority, and if we don't do it, you know, I don't, I don't need to pager, I just need like a good solid paragraph that makes sense, you know, okay, peace.
Yeah, and. Council member, if I could just say one, one more thing, it's a very odd thing about government, is they, they actually, it's really not a good thing to have a lot of reserves. I know that sounds very unbelievable, but even in the general fund, we have to report to the state every year. If we have too many reserves based on our revenue, we have to give it back.
Yep, sure.
Yeah, no, that's hard to believe, that's hard to believe.
No, it doesn't hard to believe, I work for the government, I, I.
And the, and the other thing about reserves, for example, in the LTF, and the Measure A, and the gas tax, you're not always supposed to have reserves there either. You're supposed to, they give you the money, and they say, use them for that reason, and spend it. If you, and I don't know if you've ever read articles in the paper of cities that gotten in trouble, or governments that have gotten in trouble, because they have all these huge reserves.
No, so, like, so let me, just to clarify, I get it, been there, sounds real, I deal with this every day of my life, I get it. My only question, my only problem with this is I don't know why we're spending this money. So my argument is like, okay, well, this needs to get done because of that, but I would like, you know, some of us would like to see Avenue of Flags, per se, some of us would like to see the trails, per se. There'd be a million other ways to spend money, right? I'm just trying to get why we're spending money on this, and I think you guys get the message, but that, that's my piece.
John, do you have something you wanted to say?
No, I mean, I, I'm going along with, I recognize both sides here, and I know, Foster knows of all people, you know, about the, I even hate the term user lose it, but at the same time, we do recognize the fact that we will ultimately spend these funds, and they're going to go to a proper source. So I see what Foster's saying in regard to, is why for this particular area would the funding be reserved as opposed to something else? And I know where you're coming with that, but I think that itemizing it at this time is not necessarily an easy approach, not necessarily able to recognize every little area that you go to, unless you took that giant reserve and broke it out to all the different sections that you just mentioned.
Well, so this is the thing, John, that there already, this allows me a little, and this part of that issue I brought up originally, is that when you refer to the other sections of the budget, they are each broken out by, by what is being spent on what. And in regards to the capital improvement project, they're not. So in the places where we're spending the most amount of money, it has the less, the least detail. In places where we're spending the least amount of money, has the most detail. And so that, I'm trying to flip.
I believe that particular section oversees the other, correct, Mark?
Well, you know, I went up to both of your points, you know, every, and I think Vice Mayor Andrisa can, can attest to this. We've never had a capital program in the budget before, this is two years, it's a work in process. And any input we can get to make the capital improvement section better, we're going to look at it and take care of it.
Okay, so down, so down the line, say that the funding that was reserved for A, you know, Area A, which you guys had mentioned, and not from Area B, could later, one take from Peter to pay Paul down the line, if we did see something that, or is that, yes, that's what I figured, and that, that's what I figured.
Yeah, and so, anything to make it more transparent and better is, we can do. So next budget, we'll have a lot more detail in the capital, and it can be, again, work in progress.
So council member, if there's, we'd like, we could move on to the next page, you have some questions?
I had a couple of questions. First of all, I'm still on one fifty-nine. You've got fleet purchases, twenty-five thousand for water and fifty thousand for wastewater. Didn't we just buy two or three trucks? So are we purchasing three more trucks this year?
Yes, so we replaced the facilities maintenance truck this past year. We have three other vehicles, two in wastewater, one in water, that are twelve years old. So we are way past the replacement cycle. the replacement cycle.
So why haven't we been putting, we used to put a little money aside each year, so that we didn't have these big chunks that came out?
I think a few years ago, it was determined that instead of looking, squirreling away every year, that we would just show it in the year that we planned to do the expenditures.
So we are planning on three more trucks this year?
Yes.
Okay.
When you're looking at that, because that's a capital issue.
Right.
We go to the city, leave the cities, and we see efficiency vehicles, smaller things where one square mile, you know, we're not Lompoc, Santa Maria, 10, 15 miles to traverse. I just, I would like us to have that opportunity to look at options for just, you know, guys that are in the neighborhood, that are going to do something. And then I know, then they say, okay, well, you realize you got to go get all the stuff in the plant to fix the line that we've got to call on. But I think we need to be more in touch. We've got some big vehicles going in the city streets with little efficiency.
Essentially, it's not like the truck's, it's not like the truck's going to break down 80 miles from here, and we're going to be, you know, in trouble. I say my truck for driving around town.
When we buy a fleet, we should start, we should start thinking smaller things, just for the sake of...
These are, these are work trucks. So they are the size of F-150s, Silverados, you know, we're not looking at the big extended cabs. These are the smallest work trucks feasible.
We've got leather in one of our trucks. It really bothers me.
Well, again, we don't specify that. When we go out to bid, we specify the basic requirements we need. We don't specify luxury items. And the dealers bid back the best item that they can give us for the best price.
It was still 25,000.
Okay. I've got a couple more line items, and I know it's getting late. Village Park Improvements, 216,000. I thought the park, that that was not something we were, we paid to have the gazebo, and that's already been paid for, set aside. Why do we have another 216,000?
The expenditures have not been made. The park isn't complete, and we are not reimbursing them until the park is complete.
Yeah, so we haven't paid anything yet. So that's still the amount that we agreed to.
So may I ask, I asked Rose this on Friday, and at the planning commission, we spent hours, I spent hours, weeks, weeks of my life on this topic. And then the city, it got moved to city council. The city council, I was told by Friday, confirmed that you guys chose to, this is long ago, pave over huge sections, and it massively increased city, the city portion of the park.
Not that I remember.
Okay.
You authorized, this budget amount was, council authorized for our...
We didn't authorize concrete being placed over the park. It was, there were two pocket parks, and we switched it back to one big park.
Yeah. And then you paved a whole bunch of the area. There was a $200,000. So I think initially, the planning commission budget was a lot less, less than half of that, I want to say. And it was more like 75K, and then the council way up it.
The village park?
Yes.
Is it the park we're talking about?
Yeah, the park behind the big town.
And I think one of the issues, too, between the time, the planning commission approved it, council saw it, council saw it several times, the folks from the village came back with different cost estimates. And cost estimates kept increasing as time had passed.
Okay, because the gazebo had gone up in price, and I fought really hard to get it, get council to approve it at the higher price, so it could be purchased and put aside, and we wouldn't have to pay so much more four years down the line.
This is still that amount that council authorized. We have not, it's still shown here, because we have not completed that expenditure.
But none of the items have been purchased. Okay.
That's slightly different than what you told me on Friday. And I know it's getting late, but this is the budget. So help me. How much is the, how much is the contractors paying for?
I don't have that detail here.
Is it more or less than what we're paying for?
It's more.
Okay.
Because they're doing all the site prep as well.
Right.
Okay.
Infrastructure.
So there's...
But the increase to some of those items you just mentioned, those shouldn't be on us.
Council agreed to it.
I really don't want to hear that when he's done with this, that that 216,000 isn't going to buy what we approved to be bought, because the prices have all gone up. That, yeah, that's not what I remember.
Well, so I think they're going to reprioritize some of the list on what is a council health item, and what's like a capital infrastructure item. And so that will be one of those things that we can massage, if you will.
Yeah, I had, there were two other ones. One of them was just a little humorous for me. Post office fire alarm system replacement set for 20,000. I retired there after 14 years, and that thing was broken when I started there. And we're going to fix it this year. I just kind of...
After we get the door fixed.
That'll be noted as a, not a council or a priority.
I'm just saying. I remember going back and forth. No, it's the city's fault. No, it's the post office's fault.
Those are great fighters as the postal chief.
You know, and then the one that councilmember King pointed out to me, we've got the Phase Three Highway 246, Sycamore, it's 092-306, the pedestrian crossing, where we've got $70,000 going towards it. But then in fiscal year 18, 19, we have 670,000 going towards it.
Correct. So this fiscal, first fiscal year, that's the design and permitting portion. We have a grant for $70,000 to complete that work. We are hoping that the next fiscal year, we're going to be able to start construction. We did receive a grant from the ATP award for the construction in roughly $650,000 to construct the improvements.
This isn't our, this isn't our money, basically.
Right, right. We did get monies for that.
I'm hoping to get this...
And is that the grant?
And the NS went out and got which grant did they? Yes, yeah, both of these have been worked on by them. And so that's why, as I said, in the future years, we don't have this detail as far as which fund, et cetera, it's coming out from. Because, you know, things can change depending on where and how, if we get additional grant monies or other sources of income for it.
Okay. I'm done.
Okay. Well, then we'll move on to the next page. And the next page is simply the five-year budget. So it spreads it out, and we try to be as exact as we can with start dates and end dates, and kind of give you an idea of what we feel is a fair amount of time. So that's what those are. And if you go to the very, very end, where there's a heading that says Fund Balance Analysis, Capital Improvement Projects. So the only items, the only funds here would be those that have capital improvements. So, and here's where I'm looking at fund equity. So I'm really just looking at cash to make sure, is there enough cash in these funds? Because I know that they need reserves. So what I'm doing is then entering that in the first column. I look at revenue expenditures. How much are the KIPS? And then the final line item gives you what the ending balance would be. So in these cases, you know, there's, it's ending, hopefully, well, we'll spend all of the money, which is fine with, for example, SB CAG's happy, because they're giving us the money to spend. So as we just talked about, and general fund does go down, that's the one that you can see going down. So that, but here again, we're just looking at KIPS.
Can I ask my questions now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Could we go back up to the top now, which essentially is an offshoot of those KIP transfers? And just some basic questions.
What page are we on?
159, I think he's back on.
No, I'm going to be on way at the top, like 50...
Six.
So you want to go like back to 56?
60. Start at 60. I'll make this quick. So just, I just want to make sure we're clear on this topic, because this water issue. So the revenues, I want to make sure I understand this. The revenues listed for the proposed go from 1.5 to 1.8, and then just up a little bit after that. Are those numbers assuming the wastewater increases?
Okay, could you tell me what page you're on again?
Page 60.
Okay, sorry. All right. All right. So you're on wastewater?
Yes.
Operating fund, the very top one?
Yeah, well, I was looking at the total amounts, but sure, sure. The wastewater, oh yeah, sorry, wastewater operating...
So we're looking at operating income for wastewater of 888-500?
Right.
And then I say transfer from reserves for operating costs, 350, 308.
Got it.
And that's basically to operate the wastewater.
Got it. So what I'm asking is, do those proposed budgets take into account the increase that the council voted on prior to my tenure?
Yes.
Yes. So even in this scenario with the increases, we are still running a significant deficit?
Yes.
To the point where the reserves will be completely depleted, in my estimation, in three to four years?
Unless, well, we have to give it time. We just, the rates went up in November of this last year.
They've been down low for many years.
I'll call you and talk to you.
Right, so...
Yeah, this is, this is before you came in.
I get it. I just want to make sure. But even with the increases, the reserves will be completely depleted. So the increases don't even offset, we're still in the red with the increases.
We're hoping that the increases will offset this at a point. We won't completely, we're hoping it doesn't, doesn't offset it by the time we completely deplete. But these were all discussed with our rate study. And he looked, the consultant looked at this, and he himself said, well, you know, it's incremental. Because we couldn't, if we would have raised rates to the point to get out of the red in a year, we would be higher supply. It would be insane. So we tried to be fair.
I, no question. I'm just, I'm just...
We're working our way out of the red.
I'm looking for an explanation. Controversy when it initially went down. And ultimately, there was a purpose. And that's kind of what we're striving toward, to ultimately pay it off. But yes, if we continue the way we had been for years, then we'd be even a bigger problem.
The enterprise fund is supposed to be at a zero, it's supposed to just balance itself out at the end of the year. And for years and years, the previous councils had used general funds to make up the difference.
Connection fees.
Got it. So...
And they never raised rates.
So I guess I'm trying to piggyback on this a little more. I got, I'm with you. I just want to make sure I understood that. So then, the capital fund?
Yes.
Right? So we're also pulling that from reserves to fix the critical items. So we have a dual problem. The operating costs were in the red, and the capital hasn't been fixed. So we're pulling even more from reserves to fix the capital problem.
Yes, councilmember. However, the consultant, he separated this out, because this capital fund is funded by connection fees. So this is where we're, again, we're hoping that this will happen the same way that by connection fees, this will eventually take care of itself.
I'm getting, I'm getting, copy. Okay. And so without going into details on the water, essentially, ditto.
Same deal. And even a bigger deficit for the operating cost in the water fund. So that's even more serious, however...
So let me ask a better question. What is the strategic plan if the numbers don't escalate as we all pray? Where I word, hope is not a strategy.
No.
So what is the strategy, may I ask? Have we developed one? Any concept of one ever discussed, anything like that, for when this really doesn't turn out like we all hope?
Well, we're keeping a very close eye on it and watching it very carefully. Again, we'd like to give it a full year going into two years. So this full, the full year is November of 2018, no, 2017. 2017. So we'll give it a full year, and we're looking at it very closely. And we will report back to council, like we're reporting right now, really, that we're showing you that we're still, we're still in a deficit.
And we can't develop a plan until we know after a year of where we're at. Not as, no, not as bad it is of where we're at, and then we can...
How much better it is.
And we can develop a plan based on that.
Okay. Okay, that's fair. We started to mitigate the problem, and we're going to see how the mitigation works out, essentially. Okay.
So council, from here, we're basically done with the budget. And I think we've covered everything. We've given you all the information. We simply will make our changes and additions, and do everything that you've asked us to do. We'll bring it back next meeting. And we'll hopefully have an approval. And if not, we'll make our new, some new changes and bring it back again. But we thank you so much for this session.
Thank you very, very much for your work.
Very good work on the CIP and all the, this is heavy and intense work.
A lot of work, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All righty, moving on to city managers' report.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, we are hopefully going to get bike lanes in the Slurry Seal project from 101 to the east. And we thank Bicycle Coalition members for bugging Caltrans and the county and SB CAG. So we all were lobbying to get that, and we are now working on the plans to give to them, so we can get that moved forward. So the Lou Atkins pavers are down in Santa Barbara getting engraved. And then they will come back up and be installed. We'll take some pictures and get them over to him. We're updating the website, and hopefully next month, we'll have a brand-new, more user-friendly website.
Oh, interesting.
Yeah, with pictures of the city and all kinds of nice things.
I have to tell you that I put in key search for Williams grant of funds, for Williams Scholarship, and it popped up 2012. It just, first time that cotton picking thing has ever worked when I put in the box. Nothing available.
And the new site's going to have some new search functions. It's going to actually be better than what we have now.
Yeah, Linda's worked with our consultants on that, to get something really looking nice. So it's going to be, I shared a copy with the mayor already on what it looked like, so...
Thank you. I appreciate it.
The commission, the planning commission asked us to look at commercial parking standards. And there was some discussions about the commons, and whether our 1 for 300 is a good number to use. So next week, the commission's just going to, we're going to give them what other cities are doing, and have a discussion...
300 square feet of details.
Yes, right. And whether that, we need to bring it down to 1 for 200, 1 for 250, or whatever. But the commission's going to look at what other cities have done and give a recommendation. And I may bring an ordinance forward, updating the parking standards, so...
Terrific. Thank you. Then cars won't get hit.
That's right. And then, as you mentioned, the mayor and I are going to see Santa Barbara budget hearings. Should be, should be interesting. We already have a letter in to the mayor, so...
Appreciate that. She said she got it.
Okay. And that's it. And we'll turn it over to...
All righty, thank you very much. Mr. McEwen?
We are at the final item here, conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation. It's potential initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D4. There are two cases.
All righty, so we're going to...